Before the meeting has been properly posted, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Larson is excused. Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Wachowski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Franklin High School presentation. I've been on the school board for five years now, and when I started, Mike Bolo was also the new guy, having been FH's principal for just a couple of years. Five years later, he is the principal with the most experience in Franklin. He is a leader of the principals at FPS and in many ways Southeast Wisconsin. I rarely attend a school board function where somebody doesn't mention the impact Mike Bolo had on them. Mike and his team, Jordan Hine, Joey Jonas, Claire Bastian, and Cordell Smith, have led FHS to steady growth and creative change at FHS that we are lucky to have their professionalism, creativity, and leadership for the roughly 1,600 students at the high school. Today, I welcome my colleague and friend Mike Bolo and his team to talk about the great things happening at Franklin High School, especially the Check and Connect program.
All right, thanks for having us, everybody. And when we think about the story of a school in a year, it's really hard to look at one year. And in terms of the people at the table and the people in back of us as well, you know, I had the opportunity today to engage in some interviews for finding the next, you know, great teammate for us at the high school. And, you know, one of the questions we're asked sometimes, what are you most proud of? And the thing I always say, and the thing I said today when I was asked that a couple of times, is we have a very supportive community, we have an amazing staff, and we have great students. So hopefully today you hear us echo some of those different things because what we do wouldn't be possible without the support of the board and the community to enable our amazing educators to do what they do creatively in their classrooms and allow our students who are amazing to, you know, create their own stories. So as we think about the story of a school in a year, you know, I just, you know, point you to what we thought of, not just this year, but in previous years, of everyone, you know, at FHS showing up and feeling they belong to part of something beyond themselves and where they can be themselves. So that idea of belonging has been a theme that we've had this year. Our school leadership team, our school improvement team's mission hasn't changed in terms of serve, empower, and grow, and together being all in for our community. Our goals are very similar to goals you see in other buildings, so built around achievement and closing gaps. Every staff member that we work with has a goal in terms of a personal learning goal built around a group of students in their class who maybe historically hasn't had the success that all students, you know, like should have, and really driving and thinking about their instruction through how do I ensure those students reach the targets for our course? How do I ensure those students learn and exceed what we think is, you know, possible for them and they think is possible for themselves? So we think about, you know, really the left side of that scorecard in terms of, you know, the achievement and the gap goals, like or the top part of your page in front of you. Those are really something that isn't dramatically different from what you see from other buildings and know that we really look at then that classroom instruction that is going to enable students to earn things that show their college ready, that indicate and correlate with college readiness in the ACT, that demonstrate those factors and indicators. And also remember that we think about those career ready indicators, that's attending school, that is earning those credentials, that's having those work-based or community-based learning experiences. And those are something lifted by people across our building, which include our community experience coordinator, our teachers who teach courses that are more often elective-based, but also as our core instruction teachers and teachers of, you know, classes we don't often think of because we encourage students to be creative and explore their passions and interests. In terms of engagement, like every building, we've had engagement teams this year that involve the breadth of our, you know, staff, and that's new for all of us. And we have groups that have met through different mechanisms like staff meeting days as well as professional development afternoons where we get together to really focus on student engagement, staff engagement, or community engagement. And those, you know, add things to us like when we had student-parent-teacher conferences last week. I'm using that phrase intentionally because the community engagement team asked us to do some things differently when it came to community engagement because they believe we could make that a bit more impactful for, you know, not only our students and staff, but our parents and community as well. So how we approach it, how we message it, and that even night student-parent-teacher conferences, and then what we did that night wasn't that dramatically different, but we had some different things as part of that evening where all of our staff is there and they're available. And also we're trying to bring people in, including, you know, families of incoming freshmen who maybe have a student with an exceptionality where, you know, there's benefit to connecting, meeting staff, seeing the building more frequently even. So again, not that different what you've heard from every other building at this point, but just want to highlight our main goals there.
So tonight, we hope to share a little bit about Check and Connect, which is a formal intervention that's evidence-based. It's more of a tier-two and tier-three intervention. So we're meeting with students in small groups and individually. The formal definition for the check part of Check and Connect is that ability to continue to monitor data from our students and the engagement factors that we most often reviewed were around attendance and then academic proficiency. And then additionally, the second part, connect, is that a connection that we form with our mentees through our check-ins with them. So we took this formal program that was brought to us in the fall of last school year and thought through how can we make this something that will work at Franklin within the current structures that we already have to support all students? So really going back to a few prior years around some of our equity work of trying to meet the needs of all learners, and we found this as a way to fill in some of those holes and find a way for us to form those mentorships purposefully. So the way we did that is by working with our school improvement team first and deciding that we would honor the two-year mentorship that Check and Connect suggests. So they say that every mentorship relationship should be at least two years, and we've been able to start that path since about winter of last year, and Claire will share a little bit more about our timeline next. We have continuous check-ins with our students, so three of our students that are with us today are, all three are in the Check and Connect program. We can share a little bit about what those mean when we give them that opportunity, but our, our check-ins are anything from a five-minute stroll through the halls while teacher's on prep to a formal check-in during a goal block to me calling Kalen into the office when, shall I have a minute or she has a minute in her day? We continue to review our data, so we have some ways that we do that systematically with different members of our student services and admin team, and then also use input from our staff to determine which students would be the best candidates for this intervention. And then we continue to try to build engagement with families. That idea of two-way communication and being able to be a go-to for a parent is really a pillar of the program that we continue to try to grow within our community of Check and Connect mentors and mentees.
So kind of giving us a, I know we're talking about this year, but I wanted us to give the full picture. We kind of have to back up to last year. So last fall, when we started with Check and Connect, it was really around aligning to our building goals and actually part of our graduation improvement rate plan in place. And it really led into then us training, like Joey said, our sit-team members first. And then we identified 13 students at that time to start us off, and two of them are with us today. So then with that, we then throughout the year provided professional development. It was really around actually supporting our mentors so that they had some strategies and some tools in their toolkit to support our mentees. So it was really around academics, attendance, behavior, and actually connection with families. So how can we help support our staff in supporting them? And then we moved into kind of the summer, and it was really our goal to start to first share the anecdotal feedback and support that we had throughout the first year of trying it to essentially recruit more mentors within our building so that we could impact more students. So we went into the summer with that goal, and then we were able to really start our, our year off with building in different trainings to support our students, identify new mentees. So we actually reached out to Franklin, I mean, sorry, Forest Park and got some mentees right to start their school year so that we were able to know how we could impact them right away. And then also it really was, we were thinking a bigger picture too at this point. We wanted students to feel connection to adults in the building, but we also knew how important to align with our belonging that they found each other too. So we actually began to start with our Check and Connect club. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we go, but this was a way for students to find connection to each other as well. And so it was really important for us to also have them be a part of a club. We know that any type of activities and athletics are something that are important for students to be, belong to, so we created an opportunity for all of them to be a part of one. And then when we came into the fall, we actually started to create some gear-up sessions. It actually was a series, so every time we had our gear-ups for our professional development throughout the year, we've offered different trainings to recruit new members, not only through Franklin High School, but throughout the entire district, and then some other collaborative opportunities for us to learn from one another as mentees, mentors throughout K-12. And then we also were able to build through that up to 50 member mentors within Franklin High School throughout this entire year. And so moving into spring, like where are we at now? We're thinking about making sure we get our feedback from our mentors, so we have some intentional check-ins coming up to get some more individual feedback from our mentors to see where are different ways we can continue to support them, different ways that they think we can continue to grow our program and make sure that we're being intentional with our feedback for them too. We're going to continue to look at our student data because it is really important that we are working through that PDSA cycle even with our student data to make sure that we're being reactive and responsive to student need, and then also getting their feedback too. So we've sent out a couple of surveys to our kids. We check in with them all the time, but at the same time, we want to continue to collect that holistically. And then finally, we really want to continue to recruit because the more of our mentees we, mentors we can have, the more mentees we can have. And I don't know a single kid that can't benefit from a mentor in our building. So the more we can have, the better. And so we're hoping our goal is to have 65-plus going into the school year to continue that growth and be able to support our students. So this is, this is a picture of our Check and Connect club. This is one of, one of the many meetings we've had. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so we've used Check and Connect club to really think about what are creative ways we can help our students build connection to the building, to themselves, to staff. So we've done things like we've had cooking lessons, like how do we budget for a meal and how do we actually cook it? So we did that as a way to just promote some community within ourselves and enjoy some food together. We've had strategic visitors. We had Dr. Mo this week. We've had Sadie the Therapy Dog visit. Miss Mulchine is in the audience as well has visited, just trying to show them what's available for them. We've had every member of Student Service visit a couple of times just to show that there are adults there that they can connect with. Mr. Smith is there every week that we meet so that he can continue to push further activities and athletics every opportunity that we get, but then also just give them some time to connect with others who have similar interests and again, build that sense of community. And I hope that you'll hear from the three students that we have here as well as to what club is meant for them too. So this would be a really good time for us to hear from our students so they can share their perspective. We'll have Renata kick us off. If that's okay, Renata?
My name's Renata Cordash. I'm a freshman at Franklin High School. This is my first year in Check and Connect. What really helped me the most was having a mentor by my side to bring my grades up. We always worked together by meeting at a certain time, but we also could meet not just for work, just to talk to one another, how we feel and where we're at. Check and Connect is also a place where you have someone by your side to remind you that you're doing okay. What's also good about Check and Connect is you make bunch of memories with your mentor. One big memory is working on a fashion sewing project, helping me find a good book I can read and setting goals for myself. The nice thing, and setting goals for myself, the nice thing about Check and Connect club, it's a group of students along with teachers and administrators who do fun activities that include learning and great snacks twice a month.
Adding on to what Renata said, I think last year was my first year with Check and Connect, and I think it's definitely helped me a lot, not only mentally, but with my attendance, with my grades. And it's nice having like something to look forward to when you get to the school and knowing you have someone like your mentor, and the friendships that you get with that as well. I guess my grades, my attendance have improved a lot, and it's nice hearing that someone is proud of you and you're not just doing it for yourself, and the bonds that come with it. I met a good friend, Tiara, through it, and we're still friends. And then like, you know, seeing the smile on Mr. Jonas's face, like if a grade goes up or something like that, and the snacks are a bonus. I guess just motivating yourself and have something to like look forward to and having a close bond with someone you wouldn't expect. Because, you know, most people think school is just school, but I think Check and Connect, like makes it a lot deeper than that, so.
My name's Blake. I'm in the 11th grade this year, but I started last year as well. My mentor is Mr. Decker. He's actually here today, so. And the cool thing about Mr. Decker, me and him talk a lot about like sports or things that we're interested in together. It doesn't always have to be about like school, so. And then he like helped me, like last year I was going through a rough patch because my dad was diagnosed with cancer, so it was hard on me to even get to class. So he helped me out getting back to like my chemistry class starting with. So that improved my grade a lot. Ended up passing that semester of chemistry. And then just this year, my grades are a lot better than last year's and my attendance a lot better. So that's what really helps me out. And then he also put me into this program called Youth Apprenticeship where I can leave school early just to get like half credit or like a full credit this year just to work, so.
So it's been great to hear some of the voices behind Check and Connect, especially the impact that we're having on students. And beyond that, up on the screen now, you can see just some data. This is our original cohort of 13 students, so this is the, the student cohort that we have the most complete data on, so they would be entering into the spring semester of year two as a Check and Connect mentee. So looking at, you know, overall outcomes that we, that we consider highly important for college and career readiness, the grade point average almost doubling from semester one last year to semester one this year. Credits earned continuing to grow, attendance rate, although it shows only a 0.1% increase. If you pay attention to attendance trends across the state of Wisconsin right now, especially at the high school level, this, I would consider that a big win. And it's also showing that we're getting more value and engagement per day attended than we have in the past, which is, which is exciting. And we're not seeing a decline in attendance, which is exceptional for this group. And then like Joey and Claire shared as well, the continued encouragement for students to get involved in things outside of just kind of their normal school day. So I'm trying to extend that classroom into the evening or the afternoons and finding ways for students to get involved in athletics, clubs, activities, that kind of stuff. So overall, very promising data, and we're excited to share again in the future once we continue to build out our mentee list and we continue to recruit new mentors at the high school level. And I think, are we gonna show the?
Yeah.
Video?
Yeah, so we have a quick three-minute video where a few more of our voices can be heard, so from mentors and mentees, so we're hoping to share that just to give you a little bit more perspective. This was done on a spirit week, so there's a lot of red, white, and blue. Like it's also worth noting that this was done at like 7:21, so like a minute into our school day, and all five of our students were ready to go on a Monday morning to share out. So it just speaks to that bond that when their mentor and them meet, it's important to them and they show up and they really appreciate it. So just a quick three-minute video if we can.
This is Mr. Jonas, Check and Connect's mentor.
This is Kalen. Kalen's a sophomore here at Franklin High School.
This is Miss Weston, my Check and Connect teacher.
And this is Ameen, my Check and Connect mentee.
This is my mentor, Mr. Droba.
And this is Ayu Bizar.
This is my mentee Blake King.
And this is Mr. Decker.
This is Mystery.
This is Audrey Swanson.
This is Miss Bastian, and she's my mentor.
And this is Tiara Liu, and she's my mentee.
Check and Connect has helped me with the extra time and the one-on-one mentor time you get for grades, attendance, just extra help in general.
Yeah, I would say one of the best parts about being a Check and Connect mentor for me is getting to know you and the fact that we get to check in, you know, sometimes daily during the week, at least once a week, and figure out what I can do to give you the best chance to succeed, whether it's here in school or in the community.
One thing I like about it is that it, I mean, it helps, it helps me. I mean, I've gotten better with Check and Connect. Like if there wasn't any Check and Connect, I don't know where I'd be.
I'd say my favorite thing about Check and Connect and Ameen in general is just getting to check in and have really honest and open conversations about how things are going and being able to have that closer relationship with a student and being able to support him.
You know, doing this mentor checking in with Droba for these past seven, eight months, my family's been a whole lot more encouraging with me, you know, because he keeps in contact with them. No other teacher at the school's done that, and then they encourage me more to do better and better.
And it's been a rewarding experience from my point of view, just to see the success that Ayu has been having, but also just to get to know him. He's a great person. He's well-liked by his peers, and so it's great to see that, you know, not only is he having a good experience in school socially, but also that he's doing well in the classroom.
For me, I would say it would be getting to meet with you every day, getting to get to know you and having fun conversations.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I think, I think it's been the same for me. I think having a process of like knowing that we're going to meet regularly. We don't have to do everything at once.
Check and Connect has really helped me with a lot of things because I was struggling a lot last year and freshman year, and me and Mystery, we'd always like meet up and check in, and we'd like turn in all my missing work and she'd help me understand stuff a lot more, and it got me like up and like a lot more ahead.
I've really enjoyed being a Check and Connect mentor, one, because I get to know awesome students like Audrey, and I get to be able to see how she's grown over time. So things like making sure you know what's going on in classes, making sure you're taking proactive steps.
Some of my favorite parts are the goals we set and the support system.
Yeah, I think some of my favorite parts is the relationship that we've gotten for. We get to check in every week and probably even more than that. I think we check in almost daily. And I'm, I'm really proud of you because I've gotten to see so much of our goals come to life.
And kind of to wrap it up, one thing we wanted to be able to invite you to in the future is we do really want to celebrate our Check and Connect students as a whole. So we have a few different, a couple of different opportunities based on timing for each of our students to be able to be celebrated. Am I holding handout or six? Okay. Got it printed for you. And so there are two opportunities, one in the morning, depending on who is available for that. So kind of a mingling opportunity to meet with not only the families of our students, but hopefully then their mentors are able to come for a little bit of it and hopefully some community members, if you'd like to join us. And then we'll have our ceremony start at 7:30 on May 29th. And then we'll also have one for those who can make it more in the afternoon, so that'd be that 1:45 time with the mingling happening afterward. So it'll be in our Saber Center. We really want to celebrate the hard work of our students. We really want to make sure that they feel that, that sense of pride that we feel for them every day. So I hope we can make it to. Good job, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Very impressive, good public speaking. Good job, you guys.
And again, I just want to say that these students will be, you know, showing up in about 11 hours to, you know, get after another school there, or 13 hours. I'm bad at math right now, time to time. So again, just for Renata, Kalen, and Blake, we can give them one more round of applause, please. It'd appreciate it.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Decker, you're a mentor. You want to show us a picture? Come on, Mr. Decker. All right, thanks again. I don't know that you needed the dramatic, like heartfelt music in the background of the video, but it really helped.
And I also want to recognize we have some mentors from the district level as well. So Dr. Mo is a mentor. I think Mrs. Lankour is trained as a mentor. So again, like it's not just high school. Every building has Check and Connect in some capacity, so. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to community comment. I will dispense reading, although there are a few people signed up to read or to speak that are, are teachers here but are not, are not Franklin community members. How does the board feel about those, those individuals speaking tonight?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. All right, please, everybody, three minutes. We will, three minutes or less. We will have a timer, we will have a timer going. And we'll start with Mary Carolavich.
I timed this. I should be under three minutes.
All right, Mary.
Mary Carolavich, 8208 West Coventry Drive. Good evening.
Sorry.
As a former board member, I do really appreciate your service and I appreciate your decision-making positions and your stewardship for the district and the community. But I am concerned about the seemingly swift action that you are considering tonight that will impact the 360-plus employees who are in the district's self-funded insurance pool. Unlike the presentation of Franklin Forward that was made to each building staff, no notice of health insurance changes, which will directly impact their own economic situations, was ever presented to them. Over the years, the board, boards, and administrations have asked FPS employees to accept many changes, including no salary increases for obtaining graduate degrees, increase in contract days, no insurance coverage after retirement, loss of predictable salary schedule, paying more for insurance premiums and deductibles, tracking personal exercise efforts and biometric screenings, and in the case of a majority of support staff and others, reduction of hours leading to loss of income and insurance. Now eligible employees are being asked to pay for potential increased deductibles and limiting choices in healthcare providers, which could prove significant for many. Those employees who may have chronic conditions and longstanding relationships with their medical teams may again have to jump through another hoop should their healthcare provider not be in the Garner app, as I have learned that neither the administration nor you as a board member know which providers are in the Garner app. If you were to agree to this proposal, will you be making a fully informed decision that will best serve your employees? As a member of the Better Place to Work Committee, it's hard for me to understand how the district is being transparent with its frontline employees when matters like benefits, salaries, schedules, professional advancement, and longevity have yet to be discussed in depth. Economic topics, while mundane, can be crucial for many in an employment decision. And while there may be job opportunities available outside of the Franklin district, don't the employees that are here now, students, families, and community deserve the best working conditions in our s- deserve the best working conditions in our schools? Please consider the long-term economic stagnation and stress that many of your employees have experienced due to inflation, which makes them particularly vulnerable and sensitive to this type of benefit change. The stop-loss policy that the district has should cover the excess expenses incurred during this last year. And as your self-infunded insurance plan moves into the next two years, the district should be able to build the necessary funds needed for its health savings account. Please consider not changing the insurance parameters at this time. Thank you.
Paula Dryer, please.
Hi there. I'd like to first thank the three members of the board that responded to my email the other night. I really appreciate it. My name is Paula Dryer. This is my 33rd year here at FHS. I love working with the students of Franklin. What I do not love is what has happened to us, the educators, the ones the district should be promoting, retaining, rewarding, have been treated. I want to be the better place to work that the district is constantly talking about. I have gotten a 6.5% increase in salary the last five years. Yes, that is less than 1.2% average a year. One thing I have always counted on, in spite of that raise, is my good health insurance coverage. This year, the district created a new committee to improve FPS called the Better Place to Work Committee. They are currently discussing issues like salary, PTO and others. When I asked why this health insurance issue was not discussed at this committee first, I was told that it was not a prioritized issue for the group. That is true. But it was not prioritized because we like our current insurance and everything is going well. We did not think that it was in danger. I can guarantee you that it would have been a huge issue if the staff had known a change would be upcoming. I am not against making changes that benefit us all. But when asked if my doctors were on the list, I was told the list would be unavailable until we decide to go with the Garner group proposal. Why are we voting on something we know absolutely nothing about? I would love to take your word for it and assume my doctors are covered and my deductible will not go up, but I can't do that. Why, you may ask? Because this comes from the very same district that told me in an email that I was going to receive a 5% salary increase this year. Please let the staff be part of this discussion. Thank you.
Patricia Sneed, please.
Hello, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity that even though I am not a resident of Franklin, however, I am a teacher. And so I really appreciate the fact that I was allowed to be able to speak. I originally coming to this was not planning on talking whatsoever, which I know you probably have a hard time believing that. But I had something shared with me at a meeting that I had prior to this. So before I begin, I would like anyone who is a part of the Better Place to Work Committee, would you guys just stand, please? Anyone here who's on the Better Place to Work Committee? Okay. And I just want the, the board members to see who we're at least talking about. And what I'm saying here is not just me. You can certainly talk with any of them as well. So at the meeting that we just had recently, it came to my attention that Mr. Cromie, you had the opportunity to go to the middle school today and at least maybe somebody else. I don't know if it was also Anna Lee, but had the opportunity to go and talk about the forward meeting and giving information about what's up and coming. And Mai, who is not, who is a teacher there, who was not able to be here tonight, but anybody who was at the meeting prior can agree to the fact that when she talked with Mr. Cromie, he had shared that the Better Place to Work Committee decided that insurance was not an important issue and that everything else we, we thought was more important. And when I heard this, I'll be honest, I was angry and I'm very frustrated because I want the board to understand that I know that you hear information from administration and it's their perspective and our perspective might be a little bit different too. And I'm not saying what you're saying is wrong. I'm just saying it's a different perspective. And so I want the board to understand that when we as a committee got together, one thing that we were told, and you can talk to these other people who also stood up, we were told we should try and look at things that do not necessarily cost money. And so that's where some of the things that we talked about, some of the things that we decided to discuss, that's why we didn't necessarily talk about things like health insurance. And also, as Paula mentioned just a moment ago, that it wasn't on the cutting block. Nothing, it wasn't going to be cut. It was going to be, we were told there was no transparency about the fact that maybe it was going to change. If we knew that it was going to change, then maybe we would have said something. Maybe it would have been a top priority for us, but we were not told that. And Mr. Cromie, one thing that you said to Mai was that, well, it's the Better Place to Work Committee. They're the ones who's making this decision about this. And I'm sorry, but I disagree with that because we knew nothing about it. So please do not use us as a scapegoat. I don't feel that that is right.
Be careful, please. Be careful.
Well, I'm using her.
We're talking about employee.
I am using her. Okay. Please don't use our committee as the, as the reason why things are happening as they were. Because we weren't, we weren't given any information. So, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, everyone. A lot to think about. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Spersky, seconded by Mrs. Wickowski, all in favor. I pose. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar, there is a Board of Education meeting on April 10th and April 24th, both at 6 o'clock here at the ECC. A community listening session Monday, April 15th at the Saber Center at the high school at 6:00. And a key communicators meeting Tuesday, April 16th at the middle school at 5:00 PM. District administrator update, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you to the high school team for giving us an update on their goals this year, but also the check and connect program has been great to watch it grow and see the improvements in the students and really nice job by them tonight presenting because it's a, that's a tough position to be in. And you tell they're nervous and they did great. Kind of an exciting point for us as a district right now is that we have a big congratulations to Nithra, who is an eighth grader at our middle school. She is the runner-up in the state spelling bee, so she will make, be making a trip to Washington DC for the spelling bee. I believe that's in May, but I don't have the exact date. So just really exciting for Franklin to be on the map with one other person in the state going on to that national level for the spelling bee. Also, thank you to all of our staff and our families and our students. It's testing season, whether we love it or not. It comes upon us. And so we've had over 2,500 tests successfully given yesterday. It's not really like honestly my favorite thing to celebrate that we assess like crazy. However, these are the ones that come on us that we have to do and our staff and our students have been great about doing that with diligence. We've run into a few glitches testing today, not on our level. Our IT program's done a nice job, but it's been on the state level. So at the middle school, we paused testing. What happens when a test, when it glitches in a test, because it's all digital, is it can freeze and then force the students to go back and start over the next day. We don't know for sure if it'll do that every time. But we took the opportunity today at the middle school to say, let's just pause and wait versus like having to maybe possibly have those kids redo testing tomorrow because it's not in our control. Most of the middle schools still were able to successfully test today. So again, not, not always our favorite time of the season, but just glad that we've had systems that are running, staff that's supporting, families that are getting the students here so that we can take care of the necessity. It is good data to use. Don't get me wrong, we like to be data-informed, but there's a lot of pieces we use for that. This past weekend, I got to enjoy with my family, Newsies. I was there on the closing night. It was nice to see a lot of the board members there also and community members. It was an outstanding show. What I love is that the pit orchestra was all our students. The performers were all our students. The behind the scenes, as I walked with my son back there to show him how it all works and ran into Jordan and his daughters. Like it's all of our students and our staff making that happen. So it was really exciting. I even learned they were the ones building and constructing the stage, deconstructing it that day. Usually you have a lot more support you need for that. So it was really great to see that, that opportunity taking place. And next week, we're looking forward to spring break. So we just wish everybody a safe break and remind them that the schools are closed and that hopefully we all take the opportunity to, to relax and enjoy it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, reports, presentations and other school board business. Health insurance proposal, Mr. Cromie, Ms. Lankour, please.
Yep, so we have Mandy Elliott back with us from Brown and Brown. She was here with us on the sixth. So we'll kind of just run through the top again of where we are. And then I have a couple of additional pieces I brought for this evening as well. So as you recall, in January, we brought preliminary budget, $1.2 million in the red. At that time, anticipating a CPI increase for staff of 4.12% and a 10% healthcare premium increase at that particular time. Over the course of really starting in January through where we are today, we had tasked Brown and Brown with providing us options that net us 0% premium increase. So I guess last year we had 10%, right? And if we're seeing 10% again, like that trend isn't going to sustain itself long-term as far as things that we have to cover. So the other task that we asked Brown and Brown for was not the typical path of we're just going to put it all on the backs of employees. We want to figure out a way to provide our self-insurance funded plan with operational like efficiency long-term so that we can sustain it. So we looked at two models. We looked at the Centivo model, which I'll start off with first. In order to make that work to cover our $650,000 shortfall, essentially we had to cut out Aurora. So as I mentioned at the last meeting and several emails, 47% of our claims come through Aurora, so probably not a great idea. So the second piece that they brought to us was Garner. So we talked about Garner last time. Garner is the app which has our high-quality doctors. Mandy brought up the process or some of the things that they check to determine high-quality doctors. And then we followed up with some information from Garner over the course of the last couple of weeks via email. So those high-quality providers, right, are designed to lead to better outcomes for people who are attending, whether employees or dependents. So ultimately, the app would help steer our ideally employees and dependents to high-quality healthcare. I think one of the key components we made clear last time is you do not have to use the app. Like you can go to any doctor you want. That's where the Garner piece comes in as well as the reimbursement piece. So some other pieces of information that I wanted to share tonight, just very quickly. Thank you. If we think about our current single deductible plan of 400, 800, where 80% of our employees who take our health insurance live is in that 400, 800. And we're only going to talk about the single deductible tonight. So family health plans are essentially built on two single deductibles. So for my family of five people, if I'm in the 400, 800 dollar deductible plan, if two of us, any two of the five hit $400 each, our deductible is done, as it currently sits. Or we could all hit $160 each and that adds up to the $800 and we'd be done. So we're just going to focus on this 400 piece because we took our entire insurance plan and broke it down into the 949 members on average every month in the 2023 calendar year. So 68.6% of our people, 949 bodies, did not accumulate $400 of healthcare expenses last year. If we take a look at the potential new single deductible, which does add that $2,000 to the single plan, 93.5% of our people do not hit that $2,400. And as a reminder, with Garner, we'll reimburse up to $3,000 of that if you follow a Garner physician or a Garner provider. So that's total, $2,400 is total. That's copays, that's co-insurance, that's any deductible. If we take a look at the plan that I'm in, I'm in the 2,000, 4,000 plan, 90.9% of our staff or total members do not hit that 2,000. If we move to the 4,000, 98.4% do not hit the 4,000. And again, Garner will reimburse up to $3,000 of that. So when I really look at that, that net deductible is possibly $1,000 if I follow the Garner path versus the 2,000 I have under the current plan. All in all, if we go back to just that first plan and think about that $400, last year, our health premiums went up for that family plan, $300 some dollars. At 10%, they're going to go up $300 some dollars again. That's $600 of cost. Again, 68% of our people are not hitting even that $400 in out-of-pocket expense, but we're exceeding that in just premium alone. So the final piece that I wanted was a testimonial video that was provided to us from Brown and Brown. So I'm just going to play that here. I'm hoping everybody will be able to hear it.
Game of trying to manage healthcare for a long time. Our healthcare broker brought Garner to us. And having managed through this for decades, I said, if this idea is real, this is probably the biggest breakthrough that I've ever heard.
Garner is a simple addition to any health plan that uses data and incentive accounts to drive more care to the highest quality doctors in the existing health plan network. It turns out that one thing matters more than anything else in determining the cost and the health outcomes of patients. That is which individual doctor a patient saw. Even within the most prestigious hospitals in the country, you still see massive variation in doctor quality. And better doctors not only create significantly better health outcomes, but actually lower cost at the same time. What we've done is we've aggregated three-quarters of the claims data in the country. So we have objective information based on the outcomes of every doctor's patients. And we can analyze doctor performance better than ever before. But the idea of Garner was to not only get the information, but really make it impactful. So partnering with employers on engagement is a huge focus for us.
Benefit education is so difficult. Most incentive programs, they're overly complicated and it's hard to get that behavior change, right? With Garner, the behavior change was, it was kind of a no-brainer.
You go on, you create an account, it takes 10 seconds and then you're it. No new ID cards, you don't have to narrow your network. You're going to get information that you've never had before on every doctor in the country. And if you use it, will cover your out-of-pocket expenses.
The first year, we hit 47% engagement across all of our employees. That's unheard of and employees love it. Like what employee doesn't love the fact that they just got to check in the mail for going to the best doctor?
When you look at healthcare training costs, you know, 10% a year. It's been a huge challenge using Garner. We have been able to break trend.
Today, metal exchange has a lower cost per employee for their health plan than when we started the program two years ago. And that compares to a 12% increase for the average employer during the same time period. And at the same time, we've actually managed to lower employee out-of-pocket medical expenses by 11%, giving people clear incentive to engage with Garner and use the tools. So the employee is one big and the employer one big. The key to everything was just getting employees to higher-quality doctors.
We're getting the best care for our people so they have the resources to take care of their families. And that's huge.
So again, the goal that we brought with Garner was how do we steer people to the high-quality healthcare providers that we can? So very similar to MDI for imaging, ATI, going directly to physical therapy. We can circumvent going to a physician who's going to send you to an orthopedic and let's just start physical therapy. And if that doesn't work, then we start those other avenues, right? To the MASH, to RegenX, trying to get that steerage to people. And again, as we talked about on the sixth, that's not out there. I can't go on the internet and find a rating like I can for a TV or a car or pretty much anything I want to buy that's physical in nature. It just doesn't exist in healthcare. Some questions have come up from both staff and the board over the time. Can we see who the doctors are on the list? Garner, Garner is a business. Their job is making money and that money is from that analytical data, right? So if they just supply that, who's going to purchase it? So that's part of why we're not just able to get that data. Should we sign up with that? Yep, we're going to have a full list. Now, I don't know exactly how many doctors are on it to the question you asked this morning, Anne, but I'm certain they wouldn't be in business if it was 10. Right there, people are going to buy it and then they're going to let it go because it's not worth the effort. Mandy might be able to provide some more information. I sent that to her. I don't know if she has that or not. Again, she was working today as well, so. But all in all, again, the vast majority of our people aren't hitting our deductible now. So raising that deductible and providing a reimbursement that covers our 400 to 800 fully and covers actually more of our deductible for our 2,000 to 4,000. And what we're asking in return is for people to find those high-quality providers. But if they don't want to, you can go wherever you want. The other piece, I'll just add to the physicians again, is you're always able to go in and see if a doctor's not on the list and inquire why. Like what are the metrics that didn't, that they didn't qualify? Or I can appeal, right? I'm not going to say the appeal is going to win every time. But I'm sure in the appeal process, there are doctors that do get on there for a myriad of reasons as to why an employee might want that or why a dependent might want that particular individual, right? So having that in place allows that avenue to still exist. Should there be extenuating circumstances, why it's a good idea to continue with a provider? Maybe it's a course of treatment that that person's on and they're in the later stages and they're going to meet the, like the end outcome is going to be great. Let's continue down that path. I would be all in favor of that, right? But again, if we're just starting out, I'd want to go to the highest-quality provider. For me personally, I'd want to send my kids to the highest-quality provider. I'd want to send our staff to the highest-quality provider that we can.
Maxu, do you have questions? I know you have somewhere you need to be.
I know you have somewhere you need to be.
So I have to leave a meeting which I have to attend, but one of the concerns which I have is for a successful buy-in of any rollover, any plan to gauge the information, amount of information which the employees would be affected by this have received and how much of understanding they have to have a successful buy-in to any change. And at this time, I feel that we need to be maybe provide at least more information, some kind of a presentation, some kind of a handout, something to the employees that why we are doing it so that they have a better understanding of hopefully, you know, why we are proposing. And then possibly bring it back to the board for approval. That was my thought process.
All right. I know there's a question, or Mandy, that Anne had asked or that Andy had sent to you. I don't know if you have.
The one from today.
Yeah. Or whatever you have to provide, please.
Yep, so I'm just pulling up Garner's email that they provided. So the question was, I'm just going to get to the bottom of it here. How many doctors are on the Garner list? For example, if I'm told to find a specialist, well, I have two choices, 20 choices, 100. And I know that will vary depending on specialty, but even for pediatric, are there 10 to choose from or 100? And the answer from Garner was, generally speaking, we surface 15 to 20 different options for any given search. For members who live in rural areas and search for low-volume specialties, like neurosurgeons, for example, that number might be closer to five. Let me just see if this next part here. Also noted, which isn't part of the question, but I think is pertinent to share, the way the underlying medical plan operates as it relates to emergency room and urgent care would remain unchanged. However, if a member searched for urgent care on the Garner app, we populate a listing of high-quality urgent care centers in the area. If a member goes to one of those, they receive the incentive. Understanding urgent care and emergency, a lot of times you don't have a decision to make at that point, you have to just get care. But if you did have that opportunity and you wanted to do it, urgent care would populate in the app. Garner does reimburse prescription costs as long as the prescription was written by a Garner-recommended doctor. I know that's beyond what was asked, but I think are pertinent points to make.
Anne, please.
So as I've been thinking about this and reflecting on all the information you've given us, which, thank you, we've asked for a lot. And one thing I did notice is when we asked for sort of a referral from someone who's using Garner, we received one from a group in Indiana. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of Garner footprint in our service area. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. Yep, you're on a bit of the cutting edge with it.
So I don't love that. And the reason I don't love it is just because it's, if this all works, it's cracking the code of what's plagued, like, part of the problem with our healthcare system for years. Like, we have a broken healthcare delivery system in this country, we're not going to solve it at this table. If this proves to be a helpful tool in doing that, I will wish that I had bought stock earlier. But I'm always, I always sort of think, if it sounds too good to be true, it might be. And I'm not saying we shouldn't offer this. And it sounds like there's a significant amount of our employees who might be interested in, yeah, I will try my hand with a Garner doc. I only spend less than $400 on my healthcare every year. I'm in that sort of young, healthy pool. And if we do our job to sort of roll it out and convince people to enroll in it, and it proves to be successful, I think we would increase our adoption level by that mechanism. However, I do have concerns about people who, whether they're high-quality or not, as defined by Garner, have a longstanding relationship with their physician. And because unlike other commercial goods and services, a lot of times what goes into you considering a quality relationship with your doctor is emotional and not measurable. And that's okay. I know I sort of threw it out there last time, I didn't lean on it a lot, but I would love to know what it would look like to offer a hybrid option. So if somebody wanted to have an increase in their premium so that they could be guaranteed to have, that they know who is sort of okay, I would like to know what that would look like. I would like to see that, that option mocked up for us. And I think that that would also sort of force us as a team to then hit the road and really do the hard work of explaining how Garner works. Because anytime we're transferring the burden of making significant healthcare decisions to employees, we have to educate them because most people don't like to think about this as much as you do, you know?
I would add that.
And nor does everyone have the time. Some of those people who might say, I'm willing to take a 10% increase in my premium, might be someone who's like, I just don't have the time for this nonsense. I figured it all out before, and I'm done.
I would just add, should the board approve at any point a healthcare change, that all go, very similar to the Franklin Forward Roadshow that's going to all the schools, that all goes out to all the schools as well. And that's like, not just the Garner piece, that's the top to bottom, all the things we offer as a reminder. So like, I can say them at the board meeting, but we can put them in email, but that doesn't always reminisce 10 months down the road. Or if it's not pertinent to me today, but it is tomorrow, I might not remember what you sent today.
It would be even more of an incentive structure to make sure that that happens.
But the roadshow would be after we adopt it?
Yeah.
To explain the benefits and how they all work, to make sure people are aware.
See, I think I can see your numbers, and it makes sense on paper, right? I can see how your numbers line up. I think my hesitation, and now I'm here in Maxu's hesitation as well, is that we are being asked to do something that's a major change for our employees, and our employees didn't know about it, haven't heard about it. And I just, I feel like we need to maybe gather some data from employees, you know? Angie says, maybe somebody wants to, maybe somebody doesn't want to. Maybe there is a need for a hybrid model, maybe everybody really wants to, and we should just be doing this. But I think before we make a decision impacting nearly 400 people, we should hear more directly from those 400 people.
And I don't think the option of we can't do anything really exists, right? Because I know Mary mentioned our stop-loss insurance, but if we dip into our stop-loss insurance every year, isn't it kind of like if you use your car insurance, your premium goes up?
So we have $500, $2,000 in our Health Savings Account. After that, it's coming out of Fund 10 somewhere. It's going to be expensed in that particular year, right? So that $510,000 is after two years as well, right? And that doesn't protect us from a few catastrophic events that can happen that are pretty easy to happen. A premature baby that doesn't require a whole lot of work is probably $90,000.
Unfamiliar.
Right? So like, a few of those, and especially in an organization that is heavily based in child-rearing ages, like, we're susceptible to that in any particular event to having a few of those. So dipping into that Health Savings Account, like, I would strongly advise against that because.
Not what I meant. I meant relying on stop-loss insurance.
Well, stop-loss insurance only triggers when somebody's hit $125,000.
It's an individual trigger, not a conglomerate trigger, right?
Correct, yeah. So again, I would caution us on that particular piece. And again, being self-funded, we're on the hook for every dollar that goes out that doesn't impact that stop-loss. So anything we don't do to mitigate that is just dollars that we're adding to the overall expense.
Linda, please.
Is a hybrid model even possible? Because you would have some employees that would have access to Garner and others that weren't, and it could be shared? Or is it even possible to have a hybrid model?
I'm not sure with Garner. I'd have to ask Mandy.
So we haven't modeled that, but I think I shared the concern last time and happy to do it, absolutely. I have no bias to have Garner, I just think it's a cost-savings opportunity for the district to evaluate. Right now, you already have, of your enrolled employees, 255 of them are on the $400 plan, 61 are on the 2,000 plan. So to have a plan that's, maybe you hold your premiums and you increase them on the other side, this is telling us that the majority of the population already is just wanting the richer benefits and willing to pay more premium anyway. So offering an option where Garner's the lower-cost cost savings, I don't know that that would yield a large amount of people, which isn't a problem, I don't think. And also, it's very hard to predict that type of behavior. We don't, it's very difficult to predict enrollment behavior when they are making those decisions to determine what we're going to get and what that will then in turn yield in the way of savings to the district. Now, there's, we could do like a low, medium, high analysis of what that outcome could be and definitely present that. But it's, it's hard to hang your hat on that and make a decision on a public-sector employer of what that would look like as kind of a hearsay outcome. We don't, we just don't know.
What do you mean by hearsay outcome?
Maybe not the right words, potential outcome. Yeah, so we know if we did Garner for everybody, we know that this is what the estimated savings are because everyone is going to be in that program. We don't know how many would buy into it or want to have that as an option to model out what that savings would be.
Well, there again, if we could survey our staff to even get an initial idea of, are you even interested in learning more about this or not or something? I feel like that could be beneficial information.
Well, I think there has to be, I don't disagree, except there needs to be a, the other option is, here's what the premiums are going to be.
Oh, exactly.
And perhaps, perhaps the premiums, perhaps the deductibles are not 400, 800 anymore, they're considerably more. I don't know what that answer is. We'd have to see numbers. But the number that, the number that I do know is we have a $1.2 million shortfall. This isn't, this isn't going, this isn't going to take care of the entire thing. And we don't want it to take care of the entire thing, but there needs, we need to find a place for that shortfall. And insurance costs, look, self-funded insurance has, I think, been good for the district, but when we, when we started talking about self-funded insurance, we knew, we knew some of these changes were coming. Not this, because this is fairly new, but, but we knew this was coming. So there has to be a, there has to be a give and take at some point. We can't both give, both offer, offer the CPI raise and, and keep, and keep the, and keep flat on the, on insurance costs. It's, it's not possible. We have to have a, we have to have a buffer of, of some amount probably greater than $500,000 in the insurance account in, in case of catastrophic, in case of catastrophe. So anything that we, anything that we go forward with needs to contain, needs to contain something like that. I mean, these certainly aren't easy decisions, but, but we have to keep that in mind. Linda, do you have another question?
Yes, you kind of got me off, let me think here. So why is Garner kind of not, why do we have that small footprint here in this area?
It's new, it's only a few years old.
And is it a matter of being on the list and not being on the list? Or you're just kind of further down the list, and there's a cutoff? What is that, how's that work?
So there, yes, there's a, it's a hierarchy of it. They're constantly evaluating the data, so people come and go off the list all of the time.
But I think you did say in an email, if I pick Dr. Jones today, he's on the list. And a month from now, something happens and he falls off the list, you're not going to tell me I need to pick somebody else.
Correct.
I can stay with Dr. Jones because Dr. Jones is on the list when I picked him.
Correct.
Garner is new, Garner is new here, it's fairly new everywhere.
Correct.
But that doesn't mean that the data doesn't exist for this area, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Absolutely correct.
The data exists everywhere. There is a list, and it is robust. What I'm, what I'm wondering is not to see the list, but how many, how robust is the list? Like, if there are, if there are, if there are 1,000 doctors in, in this area, are, are 100 on the list or are 500 on the list or are?
So it goes by specialty, and then it'll go by, so assuming we're obviously in a higher-population area, pediatric is going to be different than neurosurgery just because the amount of data they can collect on those individuals is different. But based on the specialties in a metropolis like we are in here, it's anywhere from 15 to 20 based on each specialty.
So the one point we should add that we brought up last time too is those are also individuals who can see you in the very near future, right? You're not on a three-month waiting list to see somebody because you got recommended. If I go on the Garner list, I think two weeks was what we brought up at the last meeting, that you'd be seeing that specialist within two weeks, not on whatever their schedule is open. So that's another key component of that Garner list is there's time available for them to see you now.
Again, I would love it if it could sort of prove itself to those members of our employee community who might be interested in a potential to spend no money out of pocket before, before we go in with both feet. Because I just don't, how are you so confident that that, that that really works? Like, I called up my husband's scheduler, and I'm like, do you know about the special backdoor policy for Garner? And she's like, what's Garner?
So I'm confident in it in the same way that when MASH told us that if you call us, you're getting in. So when I called them, so I'll just walk through my whole, like, high-quality provider thing. So I knew I have at least one tear in my shoulder, I know I did it four years ago, I've just been living with it, no big deal. The RegenX piece we signed with, I was like, oh, I really want to see, like, could that go in and fix that without, I don't want to have surgery on it, so could I go in and fix it? So I called MASH and followed the protocol and said, like, look, I'd like to get this looked at. They called me the very next day, said, here's when you can see Dr. Pennington. Great, went and saw Dr. Pennington, Dr. Pennington said, let's get an MRI. So I said, I need to go to MDI. Okay, MDI called me the next day, and two days later, I was in MDI getting my shoulder whole MRI. All that sent back to me within 18 hours, they had called me back and said, you have two tears in your shoulder, this is what they are, Dr. Pennington wants to see you. Now, my schedule wouldn't allow his closest visit, but I scheduled whatever would fit my schedule. So then the high-quality provider piece comes in, and I go meet with him, and he says, you have a labrum tear, and you have a tear in your rotator cuff. If I were you, I wouldn't do anything with it. He goes, I'm not telling you you should have surgery, I don't even think you should have PT. You've managed to live with it, it doesn't hurt, so I'm telling you until it hurts, don't come back and see me. He could have said, oh, we could fix this, let's get you in, let's operate. And all of that happened on my timeframe, not sitting there waiting for him to call me. ATI is very similar, I can tell you, we have a contract with them. I haven't used them here, but I used them at my previous employer. I called ATI because we could do that, and said, I want to come see you, my back, this blah, blah, blah. All right, let's schedule, we can get you in tomorrow. So is it always tomorrow? Probably not. Is it within the next few days? Yep. So my experiences with those lead me to believe that Garner can make this work. So while they might not be high in our area, there are people moving in. And I will tell you, Angie, you're right, like, it's a little on the cutting edge of medical, right? Like, 15 years ago, in order to change health plans, all we would have been talking about is deductible increases only, copay increases and coinsurance. So while we're talking about a deductible increase, we're trying to find a way around, how do we get that money back? Like, how do we provide that incentive? Us being self-funded means we're on the hook for everything, so we have to figure out, we have to figure out, how do we help people find the places that are going to be the best bet for them? Because if I need to get my car fixed, I can go look up a myriad of places and say, what are the ratings and all of that? I want to buy a TV, I can find 100 of them right now and find out what everybody's saying about them. But I can't do that for a doctor.
I think that, I'm sorry, Linda, I'll get to you in a second. I had something that, I don't want to lose my train of thought. I think that that's all well and good for people you haven't seen yet or injuries you haven't yet had. Because I think that, my guess is that people don't necessarily care, that they just want to make sure that the doctor would be good that they see if they get a bad shoulder. And so they don't know who the doctor is, but if they, if they've been seeing a doctor for something for the last 10 years, and they need to go see that doctor. and they need to go see that doctor for the next 10 years, are they going to have to make a new relationship with the doctor? And my, my guess is, because that's the way it would be for me, my guess is that that's the, that's the biggest question and fear in people's minds. Is, is the doctor you currently have for something, either your, either your primary care physician or your,
Treasured specialist.
or your treasured specialist? Or if you're treasured specialist for your child, more likely, is that, are they going to have to make a new relationship with a new doctor and start all over again?
So the first answer is no. See anybody you want. Now the deductible
I understand that, right.
affects that. So the answer is no. There's also an appeals process if they aren't on the list, like we've talked about, right? And I guess I, I would go back to, I'd want to know, why aren't they on the list? Like what, what is preventing that doctor, physician, provider from being on the list? So without knowing that particular metric, I would, I wouldn't say you probably shouldn't go to them or you probably should continue. I don't know. It depends on what, what are the reasons that they're not on the list? But I guess like starting out, like from a brand-new one, I want to go to who's the best. And I want to send my kids to who's the best and I want to send my wife to who's the best. Now, I truthfully don't care where I have to go to get that. Whoever's going to give us the best chance to walk out of whatever it is that we're in is where I want to go.
Agree with that completely.
Is there any data from people who've already signed on to this as to how many people have the change? Specialists or PCPs or what have you? Have they collected that so that everybody's concerned? Is it justified? Is it not justified? You know, what's the data as far as that piece that we're all talking about?
So I can pull from Garner. I can gather, they incent you through a health reimbursement arrangement. I can ask Garner to give us data on how often they are providing incentives. Because if they're not, that's telling us that somebody is just choosing to continue the course and not engage in the program. If they're providing incentives, it's telling us that people are. On the Garner material, 45% of people engage in the program. So they're using the materials, they're using the technology to search for providers. That's not telling me that they're then following through with it. They might say, cool, I'm still going to go with the doctor that I was going to that's not on this list. But it's telling us that about half of the people are using it and kind of buying into the idea that this could be a good solution. But I can ask Garner for the reimbursements, which is just what's telling me they're engaging and going to doctors of their choice of Garner.
Can I, can I just ask one question based on our data? Based on our amount of people who have less than $400 of out-of-pocket expenses or less than people who have 200 or $2,000 out of pocket, we're talking about a very small subsection of our entire population of 949 bodies
Yep.
that might be in that situation that you're talking about, right? So if we go up to that 4,000 amount, where 98.5% of people aren't affected, those, there are people who aren't needing to see a specialist. There aren't people who are having an operation for this or operation for that, right? So while that's a real fear, we're talking about a very small subsection of that entire 949 body population.
Yeah, Lynda, please.
And they're evaluating all doctors all the time, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
Garner is evaluating all doctors all the time.
Correct. So Garner's not, I think Garner's a data aggregator. So they're not out there calling the systems and asking for the information. They're pulling in from multiple sources, from CMS, so Medicare, Optum, which is another huge element that pulls in a lot of data from insurance carriers. And then clearinghouses is often where they're buying their data from. So they're constantly evaluating that data, yes.
And our relationship with them is a year-to-year thing. We can try it and that, and discontinue it next year.
Exactly. Yes. Oh, sorry.
Please.
No, that was, I have one question and two final thoughts. That was my question, so that's good to know. I'm not prepared to vote on this without seeing what a hybrid model would look like. I know that that's painful and not necessarily
It's not, it's just, I wanted to, it's not at all. It's not the work. It's just, I don't want the outcome to have a completely different look than what we model and have it be like, hey, why isn't, why didn't you give us this actual illustration?
I won't blame you. And perhaps it's because I'm a bleeding heart because I used to have a foot in the medical field. But I would like to see if there's a way for people who are willing to perhaps pay a higher premium to guarantee that not a darn thing is going to change with their current health plan. And then I, I find you immensely persuasive. And so I'm, I'm confident that when you go around and sell this, and talk to the staff about the benefits of Garner, the, the, the large percentage of our population that falls into the category of young, healthy, that's who this is perfect for. In fact, some of the conversations I had with staff, a couple of them were in that category and they're like, yeah, that sounds fine. I, yeah, I just needed to know what was going on. It was that, I don't remember what my other comment was. That's all. I'm not prepared to vote right now.
Lynda, please.
And I, I just want to say though, that we have to kind of, there's quantity changes to the health plan. We can't get stuck on, we're never going to change anything. We're, we are self-insured planned. We have to tweak it every year. And I think, I don't know how we communicate that with staff or how we work through that, but it's got to be looked at and changed and tweaked every single year. So message has got to be, there's going to be some changes coming. You should not expect it not to change.
Communicating that ahead of time.
I think that the, the idea of constant change is, is valid. You're right. You know, someone who's worked in healthcare for 25 years, change is constant. As someone who participates in a different district's self-insured plan, change is constant. I think the key is communicating and not, you know, coming out of nowhere with something with no, no communication. I think we need to remember who is being impacted by this and at least have some, some dialogue or information or, you know, something. We can't just come out of nowhere and say, guess what? We're going to do this. I think there should be some, and if we're going to be doing this, like you said, Lynda, we're going to be doing this every year. Now's the time. Maybe it should have been a year or two ago, but now we're having this experience. Maybe we need to figure out, okay, next year, if we're going to be making these changes, here's how we need to roll it out. So it's not coming and, you know, just coming out of nowhere and seeming, I don't know, surprising.
I, I, I think coming out of nowhere is, is a misnomer. I, I, I will, we, we went to self-funded two years ago or three years ago, Lynda, I don't remember.
Two and a half.
Two and a half years ago. And we've been talking about, we've been talking about changes coming to the health, to, to healthcare to try and make it, to try and make it
Sustainable.
Stable and cost-wise effective for that amount of time. You may be right that we need to communicate it differently. But, but there, there is a, there are 100 different scenarios that administration has gone through in terms of trying to get this, trying to get healthcare to the spot we're trying to get it to this year since they've, since they've contact, been in contact with, with Brown and Brown. And this, these are the, these are the best ones for, for now. We've changed, we've changed healthcare a couple of times before we went to self-funded. And there wasn't ever a, we're going to talk about it beforehand. We're going to communicate it beforehand and maybe that's wrong. But that's, to Lynda's point, that's, that's what's been done in the past. And, and there is, I applaud the amount of, the amount of effort put in to try and, to try and make a plan that is affordable and without increasing costs for employees with the costs of healthcare everywhere else.
I completely agree with you there, that the, the overall, you know, ability to keep costs flat is a benefit. Like, you know, yes, I appreciate that. I go back to, I mean, we heard tonight that, you know, they, it wasn't a priority because they didn't think it was even on the table. Whether that's true or not, like whether, you know, whether it should always be on the table and we should just all know that, I, I, I don't know the workings there. But I, I, I go back to, I'm going to echo what Angie said. I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. I would like to have some more input, whether in a formal or informal way, from our 400 members or whatever, with the, with these options and what.
Well, and I think the people that spoke tonight are people that are on top of things. So for them to feel a little, you know, not blindsided necessarily, but I mean, for those folks who are in it and every day and, and are on top of things in the district, for them to kind of feel unsure, I, I would agree. I'd like a little more time.
That's why I asked if, if, you know, we need to make the vote tonight to, in order to make a planned deadline of starting July 1st, whatever else, you know. But I, I think what you said was that we don't. We could delay this and our next meeting is what, the?
10th of April?
10th of April. We could have a couple of weeks to, you know, send a simple email to the staff. Here are three options. Stay the same, or you know, maybe even two options. Stay the same with an increased, you know, premium cost, 10% increased premium cost, or go to this Garner and just, you know, I mean, a Google form. I think we all send out Google forms every day, right? We could have results in 48 hours of, I'd be interested in this or that. And I mean, ultimately, it might not change a decision, but at least there's some voice there.
I guess the one question I would have is what are we weighing that against? So we have $1.2 million to make up. If this makes up 650,000 of that. So if we don't do that, like what are we weighing against that 650 that helps provide that? Like, how do I know what I'm really choosing between? So if I just choose between those two options, but I don't know what's going to fill that 650,000, how do I educationally make that decision? Or how do we provide that? Because we haven't discussed that as a group either, about how do we fill that 650,000?
Health insurance is just one piece. It drives the overall budget. So we've got to put some boundaries around that in order to go ahead and continue.
You know, what is, what are the parameters for a hybrid model is, is the question? What, what does?
Are you asking me?
No, yes, but yes, I am. I'm asking the board. What is the, what are the parameters that you, you say you're not ready to vote tonight? I understand. But what are the parameters that you'd like to see? As Andy said, what are you, what would you like to vote? What would you like the other vote to be? Because the other options are increased, the other options are increased. We, we keep the plan the same, but we increase the premiums for, for employees.
Right.
And how much would we have to increase them to make up that money? The other option is, is we look at the cash and lieu, which, the, the cash and lieu amount, which is now six, I'm going to say 60, 6792. The, if that's, you know, what are the options with cash, cash and loot? And, and to make up? And how do people feel about that?
So for me, what I would like to know is could, is there a way to reach the savings within the health insurance bucket, right? Because we're not going to make up the entire 1.2 million budgetary shortfall completely within the insurance category because that shortfall does not come from, all, come from insurance, correct?
Correct.
600 some thousand.
About 650.
650 does. So what was the estimate for how much we were going to make up if we were to go all in on Garner?
So that's about $900,000. So that would then also
Over a year? Okay.
And that's on, that's their high estimate, right? Are we going to get the exact buy-in? Probably not. But that additional funds helps us shore up, continue to shore up our health savings account as well, right? While maintaining premiums flat.
So I guess I would want to know, would it be possible to at least hit the $650,000 goal mark? What would we have to do if we anticipated a, I don't know, 60% buy-in to Garner and 40% of people wanting to just take a premium increase and then some amount of decrease in the cash and loop? That way, you're sort of dividing the pain between people who don't use our insurance, people who are in the population of sort of the young, healthy and then people who are perhaps more frequent users of, of the insurance program. I don't know. Just mentally, that makes sense to me. So that's what I would want to see. Could we hit that goal of just breaking even on insurance for this upcoming year with Garner? And then if every, or with a, with a three-way sort of divide the pain. And then if ever, if Garner pans out, I hope it does. I mean, it really looks, if, it's just so mysterious. Even Googling, there's just not a lot out there. So I guess I'm too skeptical.
Health insurance is, is scary.
I'm not saying it's scary. I'm saying it's
Any kind of health insurance, Googling gets you
No, I'm not saying it's scary. There's not much, it's not much out there, is what I'm saying, Lynda. It's, it's, it's still a largely an unknown program. There's a lot of information about their initial investment and their secondary investment, like, right? I'm not making it up.
They're not wrong.
So that's what I would want to see, period.
Yeah, to Andy's point, their, their value prop is that they're aggregating this and delivering it. So to make it transparent would be giving up their product.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So.
But if it's as, if it's as great as the video suggests,
Yep.
then we should be able to continue to grow the number of employees who utilize it year after year and then be able to add more to our fund balance. year after year and then be able to add more to our fund balance. Our health insurance fund balance.
Anybody else have any additions to the? Mary, you wanted to, you wanted to talk at some point about the cash and lieu.
Right. I was just hoping that we could, if we need to lower it, if we could just do the 5904 and then just table the next cut until next year instead of voting to cut it two years in a row.
Linda, how did you feel about, what did, you were saying something about cash and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I thought you, you were saying something about cash and lieu last time.
I, I don't have much of a problem with changing that. It's not, it's, they're a choice as far as, you know, want to participate into, in the plan or not, so. And this moves us to an average in the area. I don't have a problem with making that adjustment. And again, that, again, it's, so we don't have to, again, impact as much on the health insurance side. So it puts the focus on the health insurance plan and not so much trying to keep people off. We should be focused on what we're providing in that health insurance plan and what the costs are to the, to the employees.
But can we agree just to lower it for this year and then vote on it again next year?
Please.
Can we do that?
Yes, we can do, yes, you can make a motion to do that.
Okay.
If, if there is a, remind, remind me of the reason to, to cover two years of talking about the cash and lieu amount.
So the idea was to move cash and lieu to the median? So just softening that versus going straight to the median this year? Like, and the median was just, again, as I told you at the last meeting, like, I would assume no one has cash and lieu anymore and to find out that, whatever, I can't even remember the amount, but 80%.
80%, yeah.
Have cash and lieu was like, oh, nope, we're going to have to keep that. So the idea was to move it to the median and just soften that over a couple of years? Like, that was the only reason is to not just chop that off in one year.
And maybe you bring that back as part of whatever you want to bring back next week?
Yeah, I think.
I would move that we just table this discussion and vote action until next meeting.
And then have a whole package.
Because then the cash and lieu might be impacted by how much of a premium increase or anything like that, so.
So I would just add one thing. What I'm hearing is increased information on the front end before coming for a vote. Can appreciate that. I can appreciate the sentiment from the audience. To be honest, what I don't like is it's creating a divide and that's not by any intention of anybody at this table. So I do want that heard in the room and we all have to work to get better at that. So we will work at it and when we come around to the buildings and we talk, we're going to ask for your time again. Thank you. And we're going to ask for you to work with us on it, right? Like, I can see the vulgarities being sworn in the audience. I don't want that for Franklin. We are better. So we will go back and next year we will inform you ahead. It was not in the top five for the better place to work. I do want that known. That doesn't mean we didn't have an eye on it. Are we seeing now that there was a blinder there that we could have brought it to buildings? Yes. Will we do that in the future? Yes. Are we in a spot right now where we can't reverse time? 100%. So we can go to buildings and talk about it. I'm a little hesitant on just sending a Google form. I think by what we've heard tonight, it's not something you can explain in a Google form. So if we're going to say we want to inform and better include our stakeholders, then we need time in front of our stakeholders. And to do that by April 10th is going to be a challenge. I'm not saying we're not up for it. I'm just saying let's be realistic. People are on spring break. So even if we want to try to do it next week, I'm not going to ask people, teaching staff to come in next week, our EAs and things like that. So we will try our best. What I can say to have that done by April 10th, I'll ask for grace. If it can't be done by then, we just ask for staff meeting time. I understand for Franklin Forward, different bucket of money. I understand the frustration that makes. But I don't know that we'll be able to get in front of all of our staff that fast. And I would say I want us to be better and say it's not optional to come to it. If we're going to come and not fully understand it and we can own that, then for us to do better, everybody needs to be at those meetings to be able to hear it, to give us the input so we can make the best decisions. Because we do have a deficit to make up and it does come from all of us and it is not an attack on anybody. So that's what we need to do for the next step and we need the time to be in front of staff so that we can do that. So happy to do it. Sad it came to this point. By no intention was that what it was supposed to be. Andy and Laura have worked very hard on this. I don't want their character brought down in this. It will do better. And you can repeat that back to me next year if we don't, because we will. But we need time now to get in front of staff. Then we'll get feedback after we've learned, just like we'd expect from our learners, right? Learn first, then get feedback on what's going on. And then we'll bring that back so you have a better informed decision. I took a lot of notes to look at, like, how or what could a hybrid look like? It's going to take a few minutes for us to, to think about that too, right? That's, that's asking us to be creative. I don't know other districts doing that. I'm about being creative. It'll just take a minute to put that together.
Yeah, and if it's like, I don't know, a poison pill, then I'm not going to die on that hill and I did not mean for that to rhyme.
Clever. Children's book author in the future, perhaps.
I was not impugning your character. You guys, I, you both work your butts off. I trust what you're presenting us is the facts as they stand. I just want to know more. Sorry. You got a bunch of medical people on your board.
It's okay.
Thanks.
We have the task. Thank you. Thank you for people that spoke tonight. We'll work on that.
Yeah, I would echo Mrs. Bennon's, part of her message. We, we need to continue to get better at working together. There's been a lot of things that we've, that we've worked together on and not everything can be done in, not everything can be done in six months. Not everything can be done in two years. And everybody up here and everybody out there is trying to do the best for our students. And I know we all realize that, but, but let's remember it all the time. Because it doesn't make, it doesn't, it doesn't look great when there's, when there's snide comments out in the audience and it doesn't look great when we're, when we're talking with fellow employees during community comment. And, and it just doesn't look great. And that's not what I want Franklin to be. So anyway, this was an action item, so I think we need, I think we need a motion to, to table it until.
I think I made a motion to table. Maybe I didn't say it before.
Oh, yeah, I didn't.
I didn't say I'd make a motion. I just said I'd just table it. So I was.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay. Making a motion, table until our next meeting or until with such time that we can get the information that we need.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Should we have an end date, though?
Well, we have to have an end date because we, we have to vote on it. We have to vote on it by, by the next meeting.
No, by the end of eight.
It has to be, it has, there's a 75, there's a 75-day. What is our official drop dead date?
Sorry, Amanda.
No problem. I would suggest that we do end of April. And the reason why is then there needs to be open enrollment communication created and deployed out to the membership before summer break. And open enrollment needs to occur so that, you know, that kind of allotting the month of May to do that is a good cadence.
So our final meeting in April is April 24th, so no later than April 24th.
I agree with that.
But we don't need a first and second reading?
No.
No, we've already had.
Yes. Okay.
Call for a vote.
All right. Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Board Clerks Report, Election Notice. I will read this for Mrs. Larson. Notice of March 20th, 2024, Franklin Public School District. Notice of School Board Election. Notice is hereby given that an election is to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, and the following offices are to, to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed below. The term of office for School Board members is three years, beginning on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. Three School Board seats will be filled for a three-year term, beginning on Monday, April 22nd, 2024. The ballot position for the election ours follows. Position 1, John Pecorelli. Position 2, Maksud Khan. Position 3, Jaclyn Gaffney. Position 4, Angela Calle. Position 5, Angela Beer. Position 6, Anne Sapersky. Signed, Deborah M. Larson, Clerk, Franklin Public School District, Board of Education, March 20th, 2024. Summer, Fall, 2024, Early College Credit and Start College Now. Request approvals. Mr. Vollo, please.
So in front of you, there is the customary tables and graphs. I apologize, I haven't been able to figure out how to change the legend and the graph since 2021. First time somebody brought it up was this year. And then on the longer list, there is a numbered set of pages. There's 14 or 15 pages of the actual requests broken down indicating if the classes will be accepted for high school credit. So if the answer is no, and the summary is on the top of the summer section and fall section, if the answer is no, that would indicate we have a comparable course. And in one case, the course is sectarian in nature. The state statute says that if you have a comparable course, that's a reason to say no. If you don't accept it for high school credit, that's a reason to say no. And if it is, our courses have to be non-sectarian in nature. So those are the only criteria we have. So notice I use the language yes or no. Will we accept it for high school credit this year as opposed to approve or deny? Because really, accepting it for high school credit is the more appropriate phrase or action we're actually taking. So any questions about any of the information? You will notice that for the fall, there were a total of 324 early college credit courses requested, 306 of which would be yeses. And for the fall, the Start College Now was 119, 107 yes. And in terms of summer, it was 106 and 92. And of those, we have students, almost, I think in every case, the summer courses are being requested to get in fall because students are asking for, most of the students ask for it in both terms, hoping to get at least one term where they take the thing they want to take.
Move that we accept the early credit college program and Start College Now request as presented by Mr. Vollo.
Second.
How many students are there?
I believe there are 56 unique students total for fall and 10 students for summer. So 56 total students for fall, 10 students for summer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Sullivan Stadium, FHS Gym Scoreboard and Sponsorships. Mr. Cromie, Mrs. Bennon, Mr. Smith, please.
Yep. So this is just our second reading, so we presented on the 6th. So if there's any additional questions, happy to answer those. But again, we would be looking for a motion tonight to approve this so we can be on by April 1st to make sure that we are on their schedule to have this up and running by our first game sometime around August 20th, maybe. I don't know the exact date, but you, you might know it. I, I know the first day of practice. That's, that's where we start.
I think I made all my comments last time, so I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the Sullivan Stadium and Gymnasium Scoreboard project as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any further discussion? Any further movement on sponsors since last time or?
So we have clarity on the fourth anchor sponsor. They're taking it to their board first week of April. We have pretty good indication. I, I won't say it'll pass because I don't know. Like, obviously they're bored, but pretty good indication from them that there's at least strong support from the people that they've talked to. In addition, we have reached out to several partners looking to start securing those next levels, the founder and the premier. And so we're really, we're not necessarily going after premier first as we did with anchors. Like, anchor was very important. At this point, we're approaching businesses that we think can fit both and providing them, here's your ROI for choosing to help sponsor us and hoping we're going to fill those in the very near future. But that's, those paths have already been started and rolling out with, with new businesses.
Thank you, Linda.
And could you maybe come back and report how that, how that all went? Did it all come together? Would that be appropriate to have them come back to the boards?
How about when you secure all the sponsors, you let us know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's just.
Because you are using fund balance for this, so we want to make sure that this kind of comes back to us.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. At-Risk Report. Mr. Ackman, please. Mr. Jonas.
Okay. Good evening. We have Joey and Anna joining. I'll let them get settled. I just have a few comments. We're back for a follow-up report on the At-Risk information about students identified at risk. And so just, first of all, this is a follow-up report from the fall. The board had asked for more information about how students fared this year, so we're back with some data and information. So we'll talk about that and provide an update. The other comment I wanted to make is that we also, in, in looking at this report and in the next item, we're going to be talking about the coherence plan, we'll be changing how we report the data moving forward on At-Risk. So if you look at the statute, you'll notice that it includes a larger population of students and we'll be reporting more consistently with what the statute requires. So moving forward, you can expect that in the next iteration of the At-Risk Report in 24, 25. So having said all that, I guess what we'll do is just talk about what things look, how things look now for At-Risk data. We have a few slides to go through. We'll talk about students identified as at risk of not graduating. That's what we're referring to with At-Risk. And also provide information regarding the steps that the high school is taking to support students and remove that label of at risk, get students back on track for graduation. And then we also have a brief update on the Community Reintegration Center. So Jess, if you're driving over there, we can, we're on slide three. You can go ahead. We've seen that before. That's the statute. Those are the criteria for which students are identified as at risk. They have to be identified, two or more of those criteria. And at this point, I think Anna and Joey can talk a little bit more about how the data looks now in the spring.
Sure thing. So good news. The numbers are down at mid-year. So we started the fall at-risk at 123 and then for the CRC, we had 22 students. And then mid-year for the spring, we are at 36 students that hit that criteria and then 24 currently are at the CRC. So then I have just a breakdown of the data that we pulled. So from the fall until now, mid-year, we have no freshmen that are currently on the list. We have 14 sophomores, 15 juniors, 16 years and one senior plus. So that is currently in the fifth year. We had four new students that were identified, 32 students still remain, 87 students are no longer than qualify as at risk. And then we have the breakdown of where they are currently at in different alternative programs or if they're in the traditional high school setting. So we currently have seven students that qualify that attend CLC or Connects Learning Center over in Cudahay. We have 11 students that are in Envision, our in-house program at the high school. In the AM session, we have four students that are in the Envision PM session, three in credit recovery at the high school, one at GPS and one at Project Success. So we all together have 27 alternative ad students that qualify and then nine that are in the traditional classes at the high school that are considered at risk. So some additional data, we have six students that graduated, so it's super exciting from those alternative programs. 75 of those students, they improved their attendance. So they are considered no longer to rent or have those five unexcused absences from when we pulled the data in the fall. The three students have moved, two students improved their credits and then unfortunately we had one student that dropped out. So we have some key action steps that we have taken. I'll be going over the first two and then switch it over to Mr. Jonas here. So some key attendance steps. We continue to follow the school policies. And then this year too, we have added additional attendance steps. So parents and families are more aware and we can problem solve sooner rather than later like being proactive. So for example, when students are hitting that 10-day mark, then we'll send a letter to make parents and families aware that they are kind of getting toward that more excessive absence list. When they're 15, we give them a phone call, 20, and then we schedule those meetings to create that attendance plan. And then also too, once they hit those five unexcused, even that if that's before, we're being proactive to calling the family, scheduling that meeting to make sure that we know kind of what's going on, seeing if there's any other barriers that we can help prevent to get them to school. Another action step that we have taken is focusing on students' mental health. We did a root cause analysis, the Student Services and Administration Team at FHS this fall to kind of see what barriers were preventing students from attending school. And one of the main causes is due to students' attendance that we found out of why they might not be attending school. So one action step that we implemented, last year we piloted this in Intro to PE or ninth grade classes, was a mental health screener with the suicide prevention lessons. So this year we fully implement that. So all students in ninth grade that take Intro to PE would be given the screener to kind of assess their mental health and then we would follow up with them if they hit that mark of needing more of that extra support too. So we're hoping to add that eventually to the other grade levels too, moving forward. And this year too, we also started doing more suicide prevention lessons in junior, senior health. So that's 11th and 12th grade. And then hopefully in the future, be able to add that signs of suicide or depression mental health screener to help make sure that students are getting the help that they need and then it'll help improve their attendance as well.
I can talk about the next one, the Graduation Rate Improvement Plan. That is a, supported by the DPI Transition Improvement Grant. So we have some support that comes with that work. And that's not new. That's something that's been ongoing at the high school. We're continuing that partnership. And so we have a team that has been looking at trying to remove barriers for students to receive the support that they need. And one of the, one of the evidence-based practices at the high school that's really taken root, that you heard about earlier, is check and connect. So we've been exploring mentoring as an evidence-based practice to help with our students identified at risk and students with IEPs to expand opportunities for mentoring at the high school. So that's the area that we focused on this year through the GRIP work, the Graduation Rate Improvement Plan.
You guys just heard a lot about checking connects. I'll be brief there. The celebration for me when I see our data is that we have no ninth graders identified as being at risk because we have been proactive in forming those relationships, whether it's getting data from Jenna and her team before the school year even started to form partnerships or looking at how students have transitioned to the high school and having mentors available for students who show signs of needing that additional support a week into school, a month into school or beyond. So we hope to keep that going into next year, which is why when Claire shared, we're hoping to train mentors now in spring to have more ready for fall. That just makes a lot of sense and we're hoping to be successful in that again next year. Anna mentioned that as a Student Services and Admin Team, we did some work around what is, what are the main reasons students aren't attending? And part of that work was to also learn what are the strategies that schools are doing across the country to improve attendance, knowing that attendance is something that is a concern across many secondary schools or most schools in the country. And that idea of home visits and partnerships with families, those. And that idea of home visits and partnerships with families, those came out as themes. So Anna brought up how we form partnerships through meetings. Another way we do that is by visiting homes in the community. The administrative and Student Services Team do the bulk of those, we did some of those proactively to start the school year. So we had literal, literal care packages welcoming students to school based on their data from the previous year that showed they may struggle to attend consistently, and then use our first semester data to do that again in February, to ensure that we still want them to attend school, and that they still have a place at Franklin High School around our theme of belonging. So we'll continue to do that. We also do reactive home visits when their attendance data shows that they may need an additional check-in, or someone to come to the home, the home, just to show that we still care, we want you to attend, and talk through what those barriers are at a more formal, in-person way. Additionally, our alternative education options continue to be something we evaluate, what do we have as far as need, to make sure that we have the best supports available for our students. The only thing I'll add to what Anna shared earlier about the data is that the Envision PM has been something we've really thought through in terms of how can we be flexible to meet student need, and that's a way for students to have a block of alternative education versus a half-day or a full day of alternative education, and it gives them connection to two of our licensed alt-ed teachers, so that they have an expert in building connections with those students, having a smaller group to work with, connecting them to the other members of their team, and we've seen a lot of success with that. And that helps create, we used to somewhat have, you know, freshman and sophomore year, not a lot of options for that, students would become credit deficient, and then their half-day Envision or half-day Connects. We've now created some flexibility, where we have even first semester freshmen accessing some of those resources to again, hopefully keep students at-risk at a lower number in the ninth and 10th grade population. And additionally, I would highlight that sixth semester one graduates is something we're really proud of, because students go into Connects or Envision in a place where they're behind in credits, and if they're leaving in the first semester of their senior year, they're accelerating. And that's a lot of the work that our adults are doing with those students, and a lot of work that those students have. And you can hear from our students that they're excited about those opportunities, whether it's the work, or even pursue, you know, second, or education beyond high school, even as a first semester graduate, as we do have our students still going to two-year and four-year colleges after graduating from alt-ed, so something to celebrate there. Just to go to the next slide, Claire's gonna be here in April, so don't want to steal her thunder, but wanted to give a few updates around the CRC, just given that every individual that engages in coursework there is identified as at-risk. They've had a few key updates from the first three-fourths of the school year. I have a school counselor onsite as they rethought some of their staffing, so it's allowed them to have a unique perspective and adult support the work that they're doing. And some of that additional instruction has been around social-emotional learning. They spent a lot of time focused on self-awareness, so how to work through the highs and lows of their day-to-day, and how their behavior may impact others while also trying to balancing their school load that they have while there. They're continuing to try to partner so that the resources at their disposal are growing, toolbox of strategies and supports wants to grow as well. So they've been in contact with organizations such as the Family Center that's in place at the CRC, and continuing to partner with them and other organizations to grow their connections. And then that allows them to also focus on what is life after release or after graduation look like for those individuals, so that they have more opportunity and the ability to continue to support beyond the time that they spend at the CRC. So just a quick update there, and then Claire will be back to discuss that more in April. I think that's it for our, our formal report.
Just a quick, quick question, how many home visits do you do?
First semester, we did about 30, I think second semester was about 25, and then those were like the proactive, like as many as we could get done in the span that we had that day, and then reactively, around probably about a dozen each semester, and it really can vary. So I'll admit, sometimes they're kind of a come-to-school, or we're coming to you, and other times it's a kind of, we need to just build a connection and make sure the student is well, and identify partnership if we can with the family.
More than I expected, so. I just want to say congratulations, that's a really good follow-up for our at-risk report, so good job, team.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a really good outcome. I, it will, it is interesting though, that, that it seemed like we had a really good outcome last year when we talked about it the middle of the school year, and then the beginning of the school year was, I don't know, a little bit of a bombshell, and I, I don't know how that, I don't know how that.
It has something to do with attendance metrics, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, is that?
Didn't that, somebody nodded me.
Attendance is the major. Attendance is the, the main reason kids get on or off the list, if I'm putting it pretty transparently. That's, tends to be the driver of the numbers that fluctuate.
It's also a point in time, so there can be some volatility, but depending on what, how students do second semester, so it's, this is March data, so the data could look different in the fall, but you know, we're optimistic that the trend is going in the right direction, and then also we can, based on what you heard, have a positive impact.
I think we are, and I agree with Andrew, and impressive.
Even just to honor, we've had a graduate since we sent you the report, so like, things do change, like, through CLC.
Come on, you did that on purpose.
No, we didn't put it in the report, but yeah.
Well, we did have a dropout, when's the last time we had a dropout? What are you gonna do, Linda?
Infrequent.
Yeah, yeah, we missed one.
All right, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
24 to 27 coherence plan preview, Dr. Moe, Mrs. Bennen, please.
So we provided a draft, I know you saw a really first look, I guess you could call it, in closed session. This is what we would consider to be all the big pieces of the coherence plan for you to kind of get a feel of how it's going to go. I think I explained in the situation report, and I'll project here in a minute, and, and we really want your feedback and questions, is the first two pages are meant to be public-facing, right? So that front page, that's pretty colorful, and then the second page that has the chart, that's meant to be easily understandable, easily digestible by the public, so we heard that feedback loud and clear, and we were in full agreement that the metrics we had were not easily understandable. The following pages up through page 20, so three through 20, are the next step on each of those things that made the front page. So you'll see that we put the metrics in there, we added data where we had it, we changed some language, but I said in the situation report, a lot of those core strategies, so the what are we gonna do to meet the metrics, are for next year, and we're still waiting on data or working things out. So I want to preface that it still is in draft form, it will come back for final form in June. So I'll pause there for questions, and pull it up if we want to look.
Please.
I have a comment, Jess previewed this for me in our liaison meeting, and one thing I really liked about how this is coming together, is that the metrics on the public-facing part are a nice balance of sort of things that we should be meeting, right? Like, like a, like a dashboard alert, like take your car into be serviced, like a warning light. Like if we fall below on something basic, like, I don't know, our fund balance, for example, in finance, that, that's a warning light. And then there are also sort of stretch goals on there as well, so it's both providing a base and a ceiling. So I liked that healthy mix.
Do you also have questions so far?
I have questions, I, I just like the way you have it set up, I appreciate the change that you've made, and I feel like it does lend itself to a much more like, easy-to-digest report for the average person who clicks on the website and finds it.
I like the highlighting of the celebrations, because when I went to the WSB, they're like, celebrate your accomplishments, celebrate your, you know, your successes, so to have that, you know, kind of on every page is, really, really appreciate that.
Are we gonna be walking through these all, or what's our review process gonna be at the board level?
So like Jess said, so we saw it a little bit in January, now's another opportunity we have a deeper dive into what's there to get feedback on, any aspect of it, for us to bring back and work on before it comes back in June.
One that I had some feedback on was the safety metric, it just.
Look away if you don't like the scrolling.
Yeah, I don't like the scrolling, tell me when I can look.
You can type the number in on the bottom, Jess, if you're gonna guess it.
No.
I can't go to universal, like those things where you wear the 3D glasses and the, the ride moves are destructive. Anyway, the rest of, it just seemed a little loosey-goosey.
You're talking about the metric, correct? Okay.
Right. We have a safety plan, I just wonder, again, this is sort of a warning dashboard light type of a metric, but it's just kinda, compared to the rest of them, it's a little more, not as data-rich, shall we say? It's sort of a binary, we have it, we review it. I don't know if there's an opportunity, I don't even know what it'd look like to provide a little bit more depth on that, but.
We worked with Andy and Luann a lot on this, right? And setting goals like this in my previous district too, it's always been a tricky part with the safety, and when you kind of look at the technology five-year plan and the, the building plan, yeah, thank you, 10-year plan, it's like you want those things in good operating piece, they're kind of like the red light, yellow light, green light. At one point, we even said, you just put three metrics there, and it's like, well no, you gotta keep the same, but it's like, when you don't have it, you have a big issue going on. So it's making sure you have it, making sure it's in front of the board, and approved those certain amount of times, so that we can go into the details then. So we struggled with how do you make it more quantitative, which I think is what you're asking, and it's really, there's not anything to really quantitate with it that we could come up with, but when we look at, and when we go into close and looked at that district safety plan once a year annually, that's another opportunity to look and give feedback. So basically, it's ensuring it's coming back to the table, it's getting reviewed, feedback's going into it, we're making sure it's meeting.
Fair enough. This is more of a warning light data point.
It is, it's a, this and those other two, I would say are the tricky ones that are more operational, make sure you're doing it, and you're following your avenues to get approval and get input.
Fair enough.
The 10-year plan and the, 10-year CIP plan, the five-year tech plan, follow that similar format. Do we have it? Has the board seen it? Have they approved it? Is kind of the green light to operate it.
Okay.
As long as we're in that bucket, or that area, I, I asked this before, but I think we should have some focus on energy savings, and I think it's missing, and that should be part of that.
So you did bring that up, and you had brought up bringing in the self-funded insurance, so we brought in the self-funded health insurance balance from your feedback, took out mod rate, because we all kind of agreed it's a good number, it's not really, like if, if it's a concern, we're gonna take care of it, but it's not the thing that we say needs to be forward-facing as one of the biggest things. As far as the energy savings, that is something, I think Andy Daniels has shared that with you, if now we can do it, but he's tracking what those energy savings are, and some of that's gonna come into play, and Andy, correct me or I'm wrong, but in that 10-year facility plan piece, and how he cycles through what's on that list, as we start thinking about energy efficiency, and then the dollar amounts that are going into that. So when we talked about it from your feedback, that's where we saw it fitting in, but I mean, we can decide if the board says like, find an outward-facing metric for it, we could take it back and try to figure it out, but the initial conversation from your feedback on that, Linda, was like it feeds into that 10-year plan, how we're looking at the costing there, and, and what we're putting into that budget.
Yeah, I guess then why wouldn't we have a, a draw-out on like, condition of the, of the heating system? Why is that particular aspect of, I'm just, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but can you explain why that particular aspect of buildings and grounds is the most important?
Because that's an opportunity for payback. You know, we spend less on energy, we have more to spend elsewhere. There, I mean, it's a focus everywhere. Why would we not have some kind of measurement done, how we're doing?
So I'll, I'll just add a couple of components to that. So one of the things we looked at in kind of determining these fiscal things is really their overall budgetary impact, so while utilities is $1.4 million, like the health, self-funded health insurance is seven-ish, right, almost six-fold of what the utilities, or five-fold what utilities is. Fund balance, that's a pretty general one that like, we all should have our eyes on. Having a proper CIP plan, like helps us maintain, I don't even know how, $500 million worth of bill, I don't even know how many billions of dollars, but a boatload of a million dollars of buildings, right? The, the energy piece from a pure savings standpoint, I think is tough, and I think Andy talked about it, and I mentioned it a couple of months ago, but one of the components that's gonna be really hard to measure is, should we move to referendum in November and we add 100,000 square feet at the high school, we're not saving money, we're not even saving energy in any fashion, right? We're gonna significantly add to that energy usage for that period of time, and then we reset that boundary. So I think those are the pieces that we looked at, just in general, of not having it as its own standalone metric, not to say that it can't be, but we just looked at those in comparison to the four that we ended up choosing. And again, part of the coherence plan, we were trying to be consistent from group to group as much as possible, as much as reasonably possible.
Yeah, Linda.
I mean, you certainly can accommodate additions to buildings by cost per square foot, and that's an easy, easy way to accommodate that.
Does anyone else on the board feel strongly about, I'm sorry, Linda, I thought you were finished, go ahead.
And these are investments that we make that have payback, so why would we ignore that? That would help us choose priority projects, and it's not something, it's just, you know, every, you go out there and look, other facilities aren't focused on this, other districts focus on this, why not us?
We are focused on it, Linda, it's just not on that front face page, like where I would say where you hear about it annually will be, in the next couple of months, Andy Daniels is coming forward and doing his annual buildings and grounds report, and then the review of that 10-year CIP list, those, that will be included in his buildings and grounds report. Like that's part of it, he already has that, like I said, that data running and things, so that's where you'll see it annually. It is something that is focused on.
It's like we talked about in our, in our board liaison meetings, Linda, and I can't quote all the numbers, but I can tell you Andy has a number of spreadsheets, and he's happy to tell you all the numbers about how the different.
Why can't we share that with our public? If we're making progress, why can't we share that with our public?
He will, he'll bring it to that annual meeting.
Does anyone else on the board feel that it needs to be on this front page? I just feel like there's many like drilled-down areas that feed into these higher-level ones, and that's, and to me, that falls under the umbrella of facility plan. At some point, you have to say, at some point, you have to say there's a limit to what we can have. So I hear what you're saying, but I think we address it, and I don't think it's financially a significant amount of, enough amount of money to warrant the valuable space on this front page.
It's not just about the significant amount, but it's the opportunity, the opportunity for investment, I mean.
That's okay, does anyone else agree with Linda?
It could also be as part of, you know, maybe that's a celebration in the facility plan at some point, you know, like, next year, the celebration might be, we saved X number of dollars because of our LED lights, or you know, something like that. It might not be its own entity, but it could be part of this 10-year plan of what is our...
We could probably add that now, I think we're budgeting about 170,000 less for this upcoming year than we did three years ago, so, so two or three years ago, prior to me coming here.
I, I also think it's not just an, it's not just an amount of money. I mean, I, I agree that it should be part of the facility plan, maybe not, not its own category. It is, it is also not a, not just an amount of money, because we could be saving energy and still paying more, because the cost of energy has gone up 20-some percent over the last two years. So even if, even if we had done, so I don't know what the, I don't, some people may consider it success, and some people may consider it not a success, but if we're paying the same amount for energy that we paid two years ago, and energy has gone up 22%, then, then we've done a good job, I think.
How will we know then if we're not looking at data? I will defer.
The data is here.
I will see what comes through on the facilities plan, and you may hear me again, so I, we can move on. I do have another question on another.
Is it, is it okay if I just highlight, and then I'll take your question, a couple of things that look different that I want to make sure people notice. So the metrics on here that are new, and likely something you've not seen before, is underneath learning this idea of service groups. So remember, our closing gaps metric was problematic to understand last year, not that we don't want to close gaps. The term service groups, and we tried very intentionally to align all the language in our coherence plan with the language the state uses. So the state differentiates service groups from maybe disaggregating students by race. So service groups refer to students with IEPs, they're served by the IDEA law, EL students, which are served by funds from Title III, and teachers, case managers, and then students who are economically disadvantaged, who are served by title funds. So that term service groups is how DPI describes those groups and defines them. I want you to know, to us, that means there should be a value-add, those are the gaps that we should be closing very intentionally, because we can track resources and metrics that, that are meant to serve and support those groups. The other thing that we heard, we did survey staff in the last engagement survey about what they liked on the current coherence plan, and what they didn't, what they thought was missing, and they really felt strongly that a metric that should be used to measure staff engagement isn't necessarily only the engagement survey, but also retention. So you'll see that the metric for that one remains two-tier, meaning we have to meet an engagement survey metric and a retention metric, so that is on there. In the well-being category, behavior outcomes is new, we have never reported that on a coherence plan before, that would be suspensions, expulsions, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and expulsions, what we would call major behavior incident, so that is something we'll be reporting out on. At-risk students, Leo, Mr. Ekman alluded to that fact, that the law really is students fifth through 12th grade, we've only been reporting to you ninth through 12th grade, so we will meet the state requirement of fifth through 12th grade, and similar to that definition you just saw, that we broke down for ninth through 12th, you will see come here for fifth through 12th, because we are. Because we are supposed to be looking at those indicators all the way down to fifth grade. And then attendance, again, everybody hears about it. It said in the Journal Sentinel, it was never a forward-facing metric for us. Not that we didn't care. Um, we are choosing to track attendance using the state term of chronic absenteeism, which is different than truancy. Chronic absenteeism is students who are enrolled at least half the year that miss 10% of days. So that means your kid that's on excuse for 10 days, under chronic absenteeism is treated equally to your kid that's at Disney for 10 days. The state is looking to track how much instruction our kids missing. So like that's something, probably that's a pretty loaded one. I'm only calling your attention to it because it's new and I would appreciate the feedback too when you're thinking about. But that is kind of the research now is around this chronic absenteeism versus just being truant.
I guess I saw it more under engagement than wellbeing. I don't know why you stuck it there.
You feel it would fit better under engagement?
We talked about check and connects, all about engagement, trusting. That's just me, so I didn't know how you put it there.
Attendance is usually a, a measure for are we removing barriers for kids? It's also a measure of engagement. I don't disagree with you. How engaged are they in school? But if we're taking care of the whole child, I would argue, I, I had this discussion, if you don't mind me talking about with Angie, what do we do with the students who are missing a ton of days, but still overall pretty successful at school, right? Or maybe they're missing 10% of days and they're in eight outside sports or in, right? There's, there, it's a really complex group of students. So we left it over in wellbeing from that idea of whole child.
Guess we can move around if, if we look forward, see how it fits.
Well, and, and it's there. So I think that's the important thing.
Right.
Angie.
Um, oh, one thing that we noticed when we were meeting that just pointed out to me is that this, the closing gaps for service groups, we only are measuring, because we're using MAP data, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're only capturing gap closure through the eighth grade.
That is correct.
For that particular metric. And so, you know, someday if we think of a way to measure it for the older kids as well. But I think, what did you point out, something about once they get to high school, if they're sort of, the gap is closed? That's sort of a key.
If we're doing things right, if we, if a kid goes to ninth grade and there's apps, I should say, if a group of cohort of kids goes to ninth grade with absolutely no gaps, the idea should be they access high school in a way that would produce equitable outcomes. So.
I knew she said it nicely.
The one reason we're using maps and I'd be open to feedback on this is maps measures achievement and growth. So achievement is taking a kid's score and ranking all the kids in the country from top to bottom and putting them in a percentile rank. Growth is a measure, if you make one year's growth in one year's time, your number's 50. So if for where there's gaps, their growth number is not above 50, we're not closing gaps. It's a very crystal clear metric, that in my opinion anyway, it helps. If you're above 50, the gap's getting smaller. If you're below 50, the gap is growing. It's a pretty easy, people tend to understand that 100-point scale. Um, so the disadvantage, it's K8, advantage likely and hopefully more understandable for stakeholders that you want higher than 50 or you're not closing a gap.
Fair. How does that work with the rating? Gap closure in two.
Great question because Mr. Ekman would attest, we went round and round and round on this metric. So tell me if this makes good sense. So remember we have three service groups, new, students with IEPs, students learning English and students who are economically disadvantaged. And we measure them in reading and math. So that means each service groups has two different places that we need to close their gap. We need to close their gap in reading and we need to close their gap in math. So that would be six total gaps that we're trying to close. Students with IEPs in reading and math, students learning English in reading and math, and students who are economically disadvantaged in reading and math.
And a lot of the celebrations then and, and core strategies will start to like break that down. Like, okay, our celebration is if we were a four, what were the four groups that we met and be able to break it down? But yeah, it's been a, it's been a tricky one that the two of them have wrestled with.
Just out of curiosity, what else, what was the runner-up metric?
The runner-up metric.
Break it into two metrics, I think we talked about at one point.
Or the runner-up metric was to make everything in every category two-tiered. So if that, right, we'd measure ACT score and, and measure each gap. We'd measure student engagement survey and measure each gap, right? Apply gaps to each metric. The other thing we looked at is, um, through ESSA, we get a report each year. And even on the state report card, card to some extent, they take a state average and show how Franklin students with IEPs in middle school are comparing to students in the state, students with IEPs in the middle school. So we talked, probably ad nauseam, you would say now, Mr. Ekman, on should we be comparing ourselves to the state average, right? Should we be saying Franklin students with IEPs should do better than kids across the state with IEPs? And that didn't feel quite right either. To be perfectly honest, it didn't feel quite right.
I think the only thing that gets lost, well, I'm sure there's a lot that gets lost in here, but what leaps out to me is it doesn't sort of allow you to see if a trend is continuing in one service area over time from a high, from a high-level view, right? Like you could sort of swap out English language learners advancing in math. And then the next time you measure it, that number's fallen, but it's replaced by another one.
Fair. Yeah, I don't.
That part comes through like in the school improvement plans because we'll be tracking that in a district, but you're right, like on this. You wouldn't unless you looked at, I mean, we could be really cognizant in celebrations of we've met, you know, we've hit the growth in ELA for three years in a row now and be reflective over more than just the last year.
I mean, realistically, we can't, realistically, this is a snapshot, right? If you wanna know more, you gotta read more.
Well, and, and we can only put on, we can only put so many things on the front page.
As I stated earlier.
Yes. And, um, and that doesn't mean that at a, at a macro level, that's what I think the public wants to see.
No, I'm good with that. I'm just thinking through it.
I would add two with this one, like I've just talked about maps. Like we do know with Act 20, by July 1, we're gonna learn a new measurement tool, universal screener that has to be used statewide. We don't know what that is. So we do know there'll be some relooking at that metric. Basically at most of the learning metrics, to be honest, the bottom five, uh, next year, that we'll come back with probably about this time next year. Maps will still be in existence, existence all year. That new tool will get July 1, like the, the state has realized and amended. It's not possible to implement that across the state by, uh, the fall time, but we do, like, so they've amended to say your first screener is in January of '25.
We still don't know what the screener is gonna be.
We don't know the screener, we're supposed to know that by July 1. They said they're on schedule. We'll have to screen the earliest grades, not all the grades, but part of our internal, it's K3, right? The internal discussion that we'll have is do we continue with maps and this other tool? If it's not maps, do we bring on the other tool for our whole K8 or 4K8? Like those are gonna be some of the discussions. And with that, some other tools, again, we don't know what the state's gonna say. Some of them have different or maybe even we, like different, uh, progress monitors you can use along the way, which might even give us different data to look at as we start thinking about these metrics. So it's a lot of like unknown, but the known is there's gonna be change likely. Um, and that will adjust next year. We'll come back and you'll be like, why are we changing? Well, something's gonna come at us and we're gonna make the best judgment. But maps will run through the year likely, I would say at our best guess right now, through the whole year. So we at least have front and end data for the school year. But our kids might be subjected to two assessments, some of them at some times a year.
Can we go back to the closing gap page? I'm wondering under the, uh, yeah. Under the, the ratings, if, if you could still capture the, the three service groups we focused on. So you can kind of tell what, what happened each year, might be a trend that you could, to your point.
Mm-hmm.
So otherwise it's, doesn't really, without getting some specifics around here, it's hard to kind of gauge what's happening.
Fair. And the, I mean, it's kind of too soon to maybe say I'm super, but it's been a very good process. Um, I, I am not speaking badly about our previous coherence plan. It was very well done. I was very lucky to come into a place where it was developed, but I have thoroughly enjoyed, and I know Annalise spoken about this too, being able to build our own metrics and work with the cabinet group. And Mark Grunske has take, every time I update it, I share it. So he's built an outward-facing dashboard for Qualtrics and then you can click on it. So to your point, Linda, the vision would be at any point in time, we could go click on closing gaps and you would see that the trends for those, so like this level of data, this would be the data that's readily accessible instead of weeding through tables and pages and spreadsheets. These are the things we are gonna look at consistently. So, um, it's still in draft form. I appreciate some, I mean, your feedback, a, a lot of it, I think to a point, is stuff that we've wrestled with. So please, even after this meeting, if you have thoughts, share it. Um, because we're trying to get it right, because we have the luxury to build it in a way that's gonna make sense.
It's beautiful. Like aesthetically.
That's all Annalise. She loves Canva.
Oh, I'm right there with you.
This will come through in our key communicators on April 16th also to get another round of feedback. And like Jess said, it's been through our principals and some other groups, uh, through time too.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
This is, this has to do with the, the self-funded insurance. So we have sort of the minimum, I'm trying to think of what the, the various matrices are, metrics are. It has to do with how close we are to meeting a target of, I think, 25%? Andy, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
I know. Self-funded insurance, um, what is our goal amount to have, like the percentage of expenditures?
Thirty-three, I think I have it at 33%.
Thirty-three is okay.
So I was just thinking, um, as we go about, um, um, sharing more information about how self, how self-funded insurance works. It might be a valuable tool to also know this is the maximum that we would keep in that amount. Because I know last time you talked about it would be great if we get to a point, and I'm not saying on this, I'm just thinking generally.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when we get to 40, if we got to 40, I don't know what your, what your window would be. Then that's when everybody gets a check at the end of the year.
Andy, isn't that funny that we just had a conversation directly related to that today of like setting what that metric is?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So my target would be 33% at all times, so that target floats.
Sure.
Right? Based on, it's 33% of the prior year's expenses. So if prior year's expenses go down, we want that 33% to go up. If it goes up, we'd want that 33% to rise, right? But you could really aim at that floating target and try to hit that as much as you can throughout the year, right? So like, I don't know if I talked about this on the six, maybe I did, but my idea of how we would handle premiums like related to that healthcare thing would be if we have to increase premiums, I, I would rather say we're not gonna freeze premiums this year rather than knowing we're gonna increase them 10% next year. And say, let's do five this year and five the next year. But because we're trending high, let's do a premium freeze and essentially we won't collect it on this paycheck.
Do it that way instead.
Throughout the year, rather than going from zero to 10, like that's a big jump, right? So if we can smooth that piece out and if we're doing really well, if we're trending really well, we'll just freeze it.
Have a premium freeze for a month or two.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would, you know, still the, this fund balancing, I'd rather see some kind of measurement related to what our rate increases. What, what is the range of rate increases that we would find acceptable as opposed to, you know, getting to this thing? You know, consistent, you know, no more than five, you know, put a range in there and.
Are you talking the health insurance?
Yes, health insurance. Instead of going with the, um, this measurement, I would suggest maybe some rate-focused measurement to give us some goals.
I think those really coincide, they're really gonna coincide with each other, right? Because if we're, if we're adding to the fund balance, we shouldn't be have to catastrophically be increasing rates.
I think it's more relatable, the rate, premium rate increases are more relatable to the public as opposed to fund balance?
I guess I, from the public's perspective, I would think they'd wanna know that we're protected being self-funded. Should we have a catastrophic year versus necessarily the rate? Like I wouldn't, that rate might arbitrarily go up, go up just because of a bad year.
I don't think the public unders, would honestly, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think the majority of the public thinks a lot about how self-insure, yeah. They just wanna know, is it good or is it not good? And so whether we define it by whether our premium rates are going up or down or whether we're stable in terms of a balance. The reason I like the fund balance is because that's what we're wrestling with right now, like as a board.
I think, I don't feel, I don't feel that way. I feel like the rate increases really, and the stability that we want for our employees is more critical than the fund balance at this point. We have a, a large general fund balance that we could always draw on if we need to.
Okay.
I, I think that, um, it's difficult to have that rating in place at this point because it's unlikely that we're going to get to 33% for some time. Um, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that that makes us, at this point, we're at a two, um, rating. We, over the next three years, are not likely to make it to a four rating. Um, and we haven't done anything poorly in order to be at a two rating and to try and get to a four and, 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 and to be at a three.
I wouldn't say we've necessarily done anything poorly, but we also haven't utilized our health plan to help our self-funded insurance either, right? So they're, like, for me personally, like I realize this is gonna fall into my wheelhouse. Like, to me, it, it's a, like not a red flag at full staff, but it's a red flag that we don't have enough money to have three premies that are, have some pretty significant issues. Or one catastrophic heart attack and a stroke.
But we have stop loss.
It, it, it's true, we have stop loss, but then that's gonna go up next year, right? Or they're gonna ask us to laser, like if we have diabetic coma, they're gonna ask us to laser that person out. And then that entire issue's on us. Or if we get a person who has, there's medications out there, a million dollars a year. We had one in West Dallas. They asked us, if we moved to self-funded, which we investigated, nobody would rate us without lasering that person out. So then we're at, we would be on the hook for that million dollars every year, right? So there's some things that go with that, that having that balance, I think is important. For us to be cognizant of it, I think is important. Like we can keep rates flat and we could be a five if that's what we wanted to do, but we're not safe for like a long-term issue happening. So like, maybe that's the next reiteration of the coherence plan, right? Maybe we get up to something that's mirrors close to 33% and we're okay with it. We say we're, we're good there. Let's keep that. Now what we wanna do is really see that healthcare trend really slow, right? I don't think it'll ever go flat or zero for an extended period of time, but can we really curb it? Um, as much as possible, maybe that's the 2730 version.
Yeah.
Because we're there.
But I, I think it puts the focus on this fund balance, what should be about the healthcare, the care that our, our staff have access to and what they're paying for. This drives it to, kind of like we have to make money. We have to have money left at the end of the year as opposed to what are the services and what's the access and what's it costing? This, to me, it's too, and, too, on the end focused and not the important things on.
But those things aren't necessarily related to premium increases either. Like providing high-quality access to care isn't necessarily premium-related, like.
There's some connection. Okay.
So perhaps the celebrations and core strategy in that area then also is looking at what we looked at as premium or what was the impact on the employees from what you're saying, Linda? Like it gives us that ability to, to build that into the celebration core strategy area. So celebration, like we did a great job, we were at 2% or whatever it might be. Or maybe it wasn't a year that was that great, but the core strategy then, because core strategy is supposed to be now we're projecting and setting a plan for the next year. Now we can start to write, like these are the areas we're now going to focus on because something wasn't a celebration and we want it to be, that core strategy area is giving us that avenue to start setting that goal.
It's a new area, so I'm open to see it evolve.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right, um, anybody else have questions? Jess, are you done with your presentation yet?
It appears so.
Uh, all right, does anybody have further questions?
So the process then is this comes back.
It'll come back June 16th. Is that, I believe it's June 16th, the June meeting.
And then we adopt it at that point or?
Uh, first read and then it'll come back the following meeting.
And we still have stake, stakeholder input yet at another communications meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Uh, Dendum to Fiber MOU with City of Franklin, Ms. Solinsky, please.
Hi, as you may recall, about a year ago, we entered into an agreement, partnership with the City of Franklin for sharing some fiber conduit. They, as they've begun to further build out their networks, have asked about putting some equipment in our data center that will get them closest to where they connect to the internet, which is in our data center. So, their fiber comes in, that's where they connect, makes sense for the equipment to be there. And so, coming to you tonight with an amendment to that, just to add language to that existing agreement, to provide them with a little bit of space in our racks to, or they're going to create their own rack to put that equipment in, so they can make their network functional. So, any questions?
I appreciate that information, that, that explanation far more than, than what this all says in this MOU. That makes sense to me.
So, it's not really floor space, it's a rack.
So, they just physically came literally yesterday to look at it, so it'll either be mounted on the wall or it'll sit on the floor. We don't know if the wall's going to be able to handle the weight of what it needs to be, because it's a drywall wall, so, but yes, same footprint in terms of physical space.
Like, two by three feet, something like that?
Yes, something like that. Mm-hmm.
And utility costs aren't a concern, you know, where you got to heat it.
I believe it said they're paying for it, right?
They're paying for the electrical too, they're paying for everything there. The only thing that the district would incur would be the cost of the electricity being used by that equipment, which, and all the US, which is very minimal. We estimated that based on the wattage that they gave us for the equipment, they're coming in being less than $700 a year. And keep in mind that our partnership with them, with the fiber runs, they built conduit all the way to the other side of the, the city for it, and that we will be able to use in the future. So, I really want to kind of encourage that partnership, as well as the larger consortium that we are a part of, that's part of Waukesha County, that gives us redundancy both out to Waukesha and to Elverno. So, this is really meant to be a, kind of a smaller subset of that partnership as well, as we look at sharing those resources and saving both municipalities and school districts across, including Greendale, Os, Muskego, New Berlin, City of Waukesha, County Waukesha, Carroll College, all of them as part of that larger consortium, so.
Good to know. Thank you.
I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're continuing to work with the city and create part, and further the partnership and, and move on, because as we've said before, people pay one tax bill for their property taxes, they'd like to know that we're working together.
Thanks for staying to this point.
I have policies next year, too, so.
That's true.
We're good.
This is an action?
No.
No.
Information.
No.
Next meeting, first read.
All right. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to escrow account, defecence, looking for a motion.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation school building and improvement bonds dated in March 15, 2017, and the general obligation refunding bonds dated April 12, 2017.
I'll second.
All right, motion was made and seconded. Linda, do you have a question?
Yes, yes, I have just one comment. If you look at the attachment, last page of that attachment does identify the, the $1.6 million worth of debt and principal interest reduction, and it also includes the final number, which is the net present value reduction, which is $42,688. That's how much that $1.6, which is, goes all the way out to 2036, is worth in today's dollars. So, we talk about the impact of inflation.
Thank you, Linda.
You've made that point many times, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I, I'm sorry, but I can, can't you listen to me to finish? You can't? I mean, we're all here to listen to each other.
You've made this point now, I'm going to guess, 17 times. Point, you've, you've said this fact 17 times.
We've already voted to defees the money.
We're voting right now to defees the money.
No, we've devoted to defees, we're moving, we're voting to move it into escrow.
I'd like to call a vote.
Okay.
We should roll call this one. Yeah, this should be a roll call.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
Ms. Sapersky?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mrs. Wacowski?
Aye.
Thank you. The vote passes five to zero. City and district stoplight on 51st Street, MOU action item, Mr. Kromy, Mrs. Bennen, please.
So, this is coming the second time. This is looking for approval from our side for the estimated cost of about $300,000, of which 50% will be ours for a stoplight outside of the high school. Should we approve this tonight, we will send it to the city, tell them we've approved and we'll send it to the city for them to take it to common council for their approval on this end. It has already been to common council for one meeting, so they've heard the need from both the school district and the city side, so they would have to do very similar to us, which is appropriate, officially appropriate, the money to pay for this.
Thank you.
It is my pleasure to move formally approve the city district stoplight MOU as presented. Second.
Our motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Linda, please.
What's the timeline for construction?
So, I know that they would send it out to bid upon approval, so I don't have an ETA, but ideally, we would like to have it up by the start of the 24, 25 school year, would be the goal. It certainly won't be done in the short term, as bidding specs, all that, take a little bit of time. So, but we can certainly get that one, if we approve tonight, we can pass along to the city, and I could work with the city to determine what that timeline is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Angie, would you like to make a motion for these policies?
Sure. I move, I move that we accept policies 5610, selection of Wisconsin academic excellence scholarship recipients, 6100 student athletics and activities, 6480 early college credit programs and Start College Now, 6711 selection and reconsideration of instructional materials, library media materials and displays, 6711.2 selection of certain books and materials regulations, 6721 copyright applications to instructional materials, 6712 resource-sharing interlibrary loan policy, 4004 employee grievance procedure.
Thank you. Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Wacowski. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We should also motion the retirement of the original policy 404, because we're replacing it.
Oh, thank you.
It's hard when there's a long list.
I'd like to make a motion to retire the current version of policy 4004 and approve the new policy 4004 employee grievance procedures as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by me, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We had, we had another, I think, retired policy on there, correct?
Oh, was there two?
67, I love that point two, Annalee, is that one we combined, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And 67 to 12.
Okay. I move that in addition to approving the new policies, we officially retire policies 6711.2 and 6712.
Second.
Our motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. School board liaison reports, or school and community, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda.
I did meet with Mr. Ekman on the report that we saw tonight. It was a good discussion. And I did also sit in on the SWSA meeting online, did cut out early, though, where we heard some about health insurance. So, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Community reintegration center presentation, Sabre Center update, 24, 25 board meeting schedule, communications update, policies 5222 concussion traumatic brain injury, 5321 life sustaining emergency care, 5375 ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care, foster care, 6220 Title I policy, 6312 student promotion and retention, 6310 graduation requirements, 6320 open enrollment, 6731 field trips and extended travel, ceremonial oath of office for newly elected board members, board officer elections and survey all board members for pervert liaison roles, board self-evaluation discussion, district administrator performance evaluation closed session. Does anybody have any comments, please?
Yes, I would just hope that we, as board members, can listen to each other and we don't, or can let us finish and not cut people off. Sorry about that, Linda.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.